I would call to order the Village of Westmont Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for October 9, 2013. May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Pill.
Here.
Commissioner Anton. Commissioner Thomas.
Here.
Mr. Fleet. Commissioner Fadesco is here. Commissioner Van Buren. Chairman Richard.
Okay, we do have a quorum so we can conduct business. If you would please all rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and wrong.
While I have you all standing, please, if you are going to give any testimony either for or against any item on the agenda, you've got to be sworn in. So if you please raise your hands. I swear that any testimony I give this evening shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
I do.
Okay, thank you. And if you do come up to speak, if you would just please sign in at the podium. I would also ask that you silence any and all electronic devices, please. Make sure I got mine off. First item of business is the approval of the minutes of our June 12, 2013, meeting and September 11, 2013. Has everybody read the meeting, the minutes?
Yes, motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Pill, seconded by Commissioner Fadesco. Question on the motion. A roll call, please.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Mr. Pill.
Yes.
Commissioner Fadesco votes yes. Chairman Richard.
Yes. All right, the minutes as presented are hereby adopted. Under new business, planning and zoning item 13025, Jamie Tenucci regarding the property located at 114 North Washington for the following. A, a zoning code variance request to allow the construction of front porch larger than 100 square feet with an existing non-conforming front yard setback in the R3 Single Family Detached Residences District.
Good evening. My name is Jamie Tenucci. This is my husband, Matt Crawl. He's here to support me. I'm a little bit nervous. I've never done this before.
Please don't be. We don't bite.
Okay, well, that's good. Okay, that makes me feel better. As you just said, we're here tonight seeking your approval for the zoning variance regarding the reconstruction of our existing front and side porch. I purchased the home in September of 2009, and one of the main reasons I wanted to buy the home was because of the existing front and side porch. To me, it was one of the best assets of the home. I was a first-time homebuyer and a little naive as to how quickly something that was in somewhat poorer condition could go to much, become much worse, and now that's where we're at today. The porch itself, it's sloping pretty bad forward due to what we believe like incorrectly anchored posts in the ground, so it's got a forward pitch, as well as a large majority of the wood itself is rotting and falling apart in spots. We would like to rebuild a near identical version of what we have now, so basically the same size and same structure with the front and side porch. We think it would add value to our home and not only, you know, as well as the street and the neighborhood, but obviously then it would be structurally safer for us. So that's pretty much why we're here tonight.
Okay, the, if you could address, please, the hardship that's imposed upon you that you're seeking the variance.
As I mentioned, you know, either way, we need to rebuild it. We don't feel that it's safe anymore. So if we were, if we were forced to rebuild under the current zoning regulations, we would have to reduce the size of the front porch significantly from what is now 150 square feet to 100 square feet. And as well, if we were to reduce the size, since we need to rebuild so that it's safer, there is a existing cement stoop underneath the front porch, which was probably, you know, from when the home was initially built in 1953. And then to remove that would just add a significant financial cost for both of us, something that we obviously didn't, you know, plan for or think would, we would even need to do.
Okay.
Our contractor has said that, you know, he would just, he would go around it, so we would eliminate the cost of having to remove it.
So he'll just be able to cover it up like it is now?
Right.
Okay, that's good. I would presume staff has no problem with covering up the old stoop?
The old concrete?
Concrete stoop.
No, that, that makes sense, and most of the homes along Washington already encroach with their front porches as well, so this would not create a precedent along the street.
Okay, thank you. Okay, before we go to the public, I'd like to read a letter from Frank and Mary Slezak, 112 North Washington, to Westmont Planning and Zoning Commission. Dear Chairperson Richard, we write in support of the zoning code variance request of Jamie Tenucci for the construction of a front porch at her residence at 114 North Washington. We are Jamie's, we are Jamie's neighbors immediately to the south. Jamie has discussed her plans for a replacement porch with us, and we have reviewed the construction drawings. We believe replacement of the existing porch would be an asset to Jamie's property and the neighborhood. We strongly urge you to approve her request. We are unable to attend the public hearing on October 9 due to travel plans. Please contact us at your convenience should you have any questions. Frank and Mary Slezak. If we could enter that into the record. All right, let's open this to public comment. Is there anybody from the public who will speak either for or against this issue? Please, if you would, if you would announce your name and sign in.
My name is Mary Kretschlow. I live at 136 North Washington, so I'm about five houses north of theirs. When I walk, I see their house every day, and the porches fall into pieces. They don't want to make it bigger. They don't want to do anything but rebuild it, and I think they should be able to. That's all.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else from the public? Okay, we'll close the public comment. Staff, do you have anything further to add before we go to the commissioners?
No, nothing further.
Okay, let's start with Commissioner Thomas.
All right, so you're just replacing, it's an upgrade, it's going the same dimensions as you have now. I'm a big fan of porches, love them, and it's not going to take away from the neighborhood. Everybody is at the same distance from setback anyway, and since they were built around the same time anyway, and I'm in support of your project, hope you, good luck.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Commissioner Pill.
Thank you. I was out visiting your neighborhood, and this is an asset to the community. I mean, this is the kind of thing you'll want. Front porches bring better neighbors out, lets you talk to people and stuff like that. I see no reason why you wouldn't want to be able to do this. I would agree, if I was living there, I would want to do the same thing. Great idea, support it 100 percent. Good luck with it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fadesco.
Basically, as long as, as long as it doesn't expand, you said substantially similar, you know, you're not going to change the dimension, you're just maybe changing the style a little bit.
Right, yeah. It will be safe and new.
Yeah, I agree with "safe." I don't have any questions then.
Okay.
Thanks.
And I myself, of course, you know, you're probably going to have to put some more substantial footings in there, and staff can give you all the building codes that you'll need?
Yes, I mean, we submitted our contractor's plans, and he's aware of all of that jargon.
And I was out there yesterday, I have to agree with Commissioner Pill that I wouldn't want to sit out there too long either.
Yeah.
It's, good luck to you. You have my full support.
Thank you.
All right, since we have a request for a variance, may we have reading of the findings of fact, please?
Criteria number one, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in the district in which it's located. The applicant seeks to rebuild an existing wraparound front porch using the existing footprint of the existing front porch. The applicant will not exceed the current setback encroachment. This front porch could not be rebuilt without this variance, which is necessary to maintain the aesthetics and functionality of this porch. Criteria number two, the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. The home and front porch were built prior to the 35-foot front yard setback requirement and prior to the square footage limitation on the front porches. The applicant seeks to rebuild what currently exists. Criteria number three, the variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. Most residential houses in this neighborhood have a non-conforming front yard setback encroachment. The front porch adds important aesthetic value to this home. The applicant will not be increasing the size of the existing front porch.
If you agree with these findings, please raise your hand. We are unanimous in agreement. The findings of fact for a variance are hereby adopted and approved. I would recommend, I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, planning and zoning item 13025, a zoning code variance request to allow the construction of a front porch larger than 100 square feet with an existing non-conforming front yard setback in the R3 Single Family Detached Residences District. So moved. Second? Motion by Commissioner Fadesco, seconded by Commissioner Pill. Question on the motion. A roll call, please.
Commissioner Pill.
Yes.
Commissioner Fadesco votes yes. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Chairman Richard.
Yes. Okay, you have our recommendation for approval, and staff can tell you when you go before the committee of the whole, the Board of Trustees.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you now. Planning and zoning item 13026, Robert and Rebecca Rankin of Oakwood Lighting Electric Service regarding the property located at 237 North Cass Avenue for the following. A, a zoning code variance request to reduce the required side yard setback in an existing commercial lot in the B1 Limited Business District for the purpose of constructing a parking lot. B, zoning code variance request to reduce the required rear yard setback in an existing commercial lot in the B1 Limited Business District for the purpose of constructing a parking lot. C, site and landscaping plan approval. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Becky Rankin. This is my husband, Robert Rankin. We also have Robert Gudmundson from RWG Engineering here to answer any questions that you might have. We recently purchased the property at 237 North Cass in Westmont to expand our business. We're currently at 4028 North Cass, but we're running out of room, and we'd like to expand. So we, we're electrical contractors, and we also provide service calls, and we sell and service and install GenRec home standby generators. So our purpose in purchasing that property was to have a place where our customers could come and see us, and we would have eventually maybe become a place where we can sell parts and, and just have more visible presence and be in a better location in Westmont. So we're here tonight to ask for a variance on the side yard setback and the rear yard setback. The property is very narrow, it's 30 feet wide, and in the back of the property, there is a garage door, and there is also a stormwater detention basin that is kind of a pit, and then there, over it is decking, so you cannot drive on the decking, so we cannot access the garage door to unload and load our materials. So we would like to modify that stormwater basin, and it, and the plans actually detail that it will probably hold more than it currently holds, but it would be in a storm trap system underneath, and we'd like to pave over it so we can park and unload and load our vehicles. So we're asking for consideration of that request.
All right, mainly then you could say that the lot is of insufficient size where you could get three parking spaces on it without these variances. If you had to adhere to the setbacks, the side yard and the rear?
Well, as I understand it, and I may defer to our engineer, that since the lot is only 30 feet wide, if we had to have five feet on either side, we'd have 20 feet to work with, and to allow parking and a drive aisle, it would allow us...
Right. I'm going to launch into it a little bit, too. Yeah, my name is Bob Gudmundson, and I was retained by the Rankins to prepare the plans that I think you have in your packets, the engineering plans for the improvement. And, you know, first let me say this, what they're proposing to do is no small exercise, you know, from a, from a construction standpoint, from a cost standpoint, but at the, at the end of the day, I think you wind up with something that is much more aesthetically pleasing and certainly much more functional behind that building. Becky indicated that the lot is 30 feet. It's a 30 by 150-foot lot. There's 4,500 square feet on the property. Of course, the building itself stays as is. The area that we are talking about working in for this improvement is just the rear behind the building, 30 foot in y, 30 foot in width on the lot, and about 52 feet from the back end of the building, plus or minus, to the, to the, to the back lot line. So it's a very small area of proposed improvement. Out there today, just to kind of quickly recap, there are a couple of parking spaces. You can barely make out the paint marks that have been there for a long period of time that are immediately off the back alley. And, and as Becky mentioned, this, this detention facility that's been out there since, presumably since the time the first building went up on the site, it is in fact an open pit-type facility. It's, it's a relatively square facility with landscaped timbers that take it down about two and a half to three feet to what was originally intended to be a grass lawn area with a storm catch basin in the middle of it, and all the water, including the roof drain, downspouts are directed into that pit, so to speak, and then the water is held for a little bit, and then it releases into a storm sewer system in the alley. At some point in time, somebody opted to cover that with the wood deck that was referenced, and it is not a structural deck. You can walk on it, certainly. You would never drive on it. You'd probably go right through. That deck is in a position that prohibits access to the loading door at the back of the building. Why that was done, we don't know, but it's, it's not in a great spot. You cannot back a vehicle up to access the loading facility at the back door. So what they're proposing to do, which is a costly venture, is to basically encapsulate that stormwater detention facility, provide the same amount, actually a little bit more detention than is out there today, so it is technically an improvement. It is using a storm trap system. I don't know if you're familiar with those, but basically, it's an underground chamber, and that chamber would be, it's roughly 44 foot in length and 13 foot or so in width, and it'll more than provide the same amount, as I said, a little, little more than the amount of storage that was out there in the past. So we're not sliding anything. The roof drains will be rerouted, the downspouts into that basin, but it allows us to pave over the back lot and create a situation where we can put these extra parking stalls in there, and we can gain access to the door that is ideal for the functional use of that building. Now, there, there, the current plan that you've seen shows three proposed parking stalls on a 45-degree angle with, with a drive aisle. And again, going back to the width of that lot being 30 feet, and what we're proposing to do is to create about a six-inch side yard on each side, in other words, not pave right up to the property lines, but, you know, setback six inches gives us 29 foot of paving. Using a nine-foot by 19-foot, 45-degree angled parking stall, all we have left is 10 feet for the drive aisle. But again, this is not, it's not a parking lot like you would see in a typical commercial area that has a lot of in and out traffic. This is primarily focused on employees working at the facility or the occasional person that comes in to pick something up, but this is not a heavy movement area at all. One of the things that we have found out since we submitted these plans is that it does appear that we may have to take one of those stalls and create it as an accessible ADA space. Now, that would hold true, and the reason I mention that is that would hold true whether we do it at an angle, the way it's currently proposed, 45-degree angle parking, or we do it as a pull-in 90-degree parking. So I just want to explain to you that the reason we need this extra width, even if we did it as a pull-in parking, we need 16 feet of, of width for an ADA accessible space, eight foot of stall and eight foot of striping, and then you've got your other space for another parking stall. Again, things get very, very tight on the sides, so that's maybe more of a long-winded explanation than you wanted, but that's a little story on what we want to do. And as I said, this is, when you go to encapsulate a stormwater facility, it functions just as well, if not better. We've got two catchments, two structures on the top of it that'll take surface water, plus, like I say, the pipe water is directed to it anyway, but to stand back and look at it, as opposed to what's out there today, huge improvement.
So am I led to believe that, that there's a possibility that you will be capturing more stormwater runoff than what the property presently does?
You're gonna, I, I wouldn't go so far as to say that. I mean, marginal at best. We're not talking big numbers, anyway. We're, in round numbers, the basin itself has about 1,475 cubic feet of existing storage, and we'll be providing a little over 1,500. Again, we're talking about a total lot that's a tenth of an acre and a development area that adds 707, I believe it is, square feet of additional surface. Again, we're small, way smaller than the room we sit in here today.
Any improvement is better than none.
True.
All right, is there anybody from the public who will speak on this issue? Seeing nobody raising their hands, we'll close public comment. Staff.
With regard to the stormwater, our engineer did, did note that she doesn't think that the area is acting, is working optimally, so this will probably, you know, improve the situation slightly, which is good. The applicants have been gradually working over the past year to improve the property that they purchased. They've gone through the Economic Development Committee and through the Village Board, and as noted, the property is very narrow, and the business needs its three parking spaces and access to the loading door, as well as maintaining the stormwater detention that currently exists. Many businesses near the alley have similar narrow lot widths, so there have been many parking solutions over the years on Cass Avenue, and while we would love for them to, you know, meet the size requirements and have proper setbacks, the lot is only 30 feet and doesn't provide a lot of room for them.
May I also add, Chairman Richard, I'd like to commend the Rankins for their long-term vision for this particular property. They were very favorably received at the Economic Development Committee, and you can tell they've been hard at work cleaning up the property with a new paint job that gave it quite a lot more curb appeal, and I just wanted to add those points for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Okay, Commissioner Fadesco?
I was really surprised when I saw the deck. I mean, it's just, it's just an oddity, you know, and I just, I understand why it's there and everything, but it just didn't seem to fit. So I'm really, really happy that you guys are going to spend the time and effort and money to do this, because I think it'll help definitely improve the property and hopefully make your business more successful. I really don't have any other questions or comments, because you've addressed them. Thanks.
Commissioner Pill.
Thank you. At Economic Development, you had talked about perhaps showroom type in the front, inventory and warehousing in the back part, probably one live unit that you might be able to demo, the transfer switch and things like that, if I recall correctly. So are we going to pave right over then this stormwater area, and then will there be sufficient strength? I'm assuming these, you're going to have trucks delivering units to you there. Will it be able to sustain the, the weight of delivery trucks and things like that, then?
Yeah, I guess that's back to me. Yes, yes, it will. The, these storm traps are built for what they call the HS20, the heavy loading, which means you could back a big, heavy truck on top of it. It's a complete concrete structure, and then we have the, the full depth pavement material on top of that. So, yeah, the short answer is yes.
Is there going to be any rear lighting or security lighting or anything in the back there?
We currently have a light right now, but we are going to be improving that, yes.
And is that shielded at all, because you do have housing on the other side of the alley?
Yes, we're going to be, currently, right now, it's just a spotlight, so currently there is none, but we are going to be putting up an LED light with shields on it, yes.
Probably no good electrician could help with that, huh?
I've heard of one.
Something that caught my ear back at EDC meeting was you had, and while this isn't germane perhaps to this exact discussion, you had plans to open up the front with bigger windows and things. Is that still in the mix?
It is with the, sorry. It is with the water retention that we have to fix. That is a substantial cost, and if we didn't have to do that, we would be doing the front this year, but because our money has to be spent there, we're going to have to put it off for a year or so.
Yeah, I could see, this has to be done to be operational.
Yeah.
There's absolutely no way, I've been back there several times, there is no way to get at that loading door. I understand your, your plight. I think this is a great idea, a great solution, and even though it's marginally bigger, it's certainly going to make it drain better, and it's going to be good for all neighbors in the area, and we welcome you to Westmont.
Thank you.
Well, welcome you again to Westmont.
Thank you.
Commissioner Thomas?
So the retention is, is going to be the same and upgraded. You'll actually have access to your warehouse? Whoa.
Amazing.
Yeah, right. Good luck. I'm glad you're staying in Westmont.
Thank you.
I support your project.
Thank you.
And I also wholeheartedly support everything you're doing there. It's a win-win, and I'm very happy to see you updating the building. All right, since we have a request for a variance, we're reading of the findings of fact. This finding of fact will be for both variances.
Criteria number one, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in the district in which it's located. The property contains a narrow lot width of 30 feet in the B1 Limited Business District. Providing any parking and a drive aisle in the side yard is impossible without this variance. Paved parking spaces currently exist in the rear yard setback. The applicant could not improve the parking area and stormwater detention without this variance. Criteria number two, the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. Given the small lot size in this downtown location and the need for customer parking and access to the rear of the building for deliveries, the parking space improvements are essential for this business to successfully operate while minimizing parking and congestion on the public streets. Criteria number three, the variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. The proposed improvements will replace existing pavement and will improve the stormwater detention on this property. The parking improvements will be similar to those of many surrounding businesses in the downtown area.
If you agree with these findings, please raise your hand. We are unanimous in agreement. The findings of fact for two variances are hereby adopted and approved. I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, planning and zoning item 13026, item A, zoning code variance request to reduce the required side yard setback in an existing commercial lot in the B1 Limited Business District for the purpose of constructing a parking lot. So moved. Second? Motion by Commissioner Thomas, seconded by Commissioner Pill. Question on the motion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Pill.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Mr. Fadesco votes yes. Chairman Richard.
Yes. Okay, I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, item B, a zoning code variance request to reduce the required rear yard setback in an existing commercial lot in the B1 Limited Business District for the purpose of constructing a parking lot.
So moved.
Second? Motion by Commissioner Fadesco, seconded by Commissioner Pill. Question on the motion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Fadesco votes yes. Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Chairman Richard.
Yes. Okay, item C, I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, item C, site and landscaping plan approval. So moved.
Second?
Motion by Commissioner Thomas, seconded by Commissioner Fadesco. Question on the motion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Fadesco votes yes. Chairman Richard.
Yes. Okay, you have our recommendation for approval, and staff, again, can tell you when you go before the committee of the whole.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Planning and zoning item 13027, Teresa Johnson, tenant, and Robert Suona, property owner, regarding the property located at 128 South Cass for the following. A, special use permit request to operate a ground floor attorney office in the B1 Limited Business District. limited business district. Item B, special use permit request to operate a ground floor dance studio in the B1 limited business district. Item C, special use permit request to operate educational classes on the ground floor in the B1 limited business district. Good evening.
Good evening.
Oh, I'm sorry. The attorney told me that you came in after I swore everybody in, so if you please raise your right hand, I swear that any testimony I give this evening shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Yes.
Okay, if you would please sign in and give your name. Thank you, John. I must track, there was a couple, two or three. Good evening. If you would please tell the audience and the people, and the folks at home what you are striving to do.
Okay, I'm currently attorney here in Westmont, and I have been for the last 14 years. I'm at 200 East Chicago in Westmont in John Heuben East Building, and I've been practicing law there during that entire time. I would like to, I would like to rent the property as a tenant at 128 South Cass for the purpose of extending the scope of my law practice with the drive-by traffic, the church, Uncle Bubbs, and everything that's available on the south of Cass that's really not available on Chicago. Chicago's a, even though it's a busy street, as you know, it's on Chicago Avenue, it's, I'm in a professional building where there's a lot less visibility, and I'm wanting to increase walk-in traffic. It also happens that I'm a professional dancer, and dance space has been a problem for me in my entire career as an attorney. And so because I'm planning on maintaining my current law office, the office on Cass is going to have slightly, it will be the same law practice, but with a really kind of a more, a very, very contemporary approach to law. I'm a very out-of-the-box person, and so what I will be doing is I have a law office that is gonna be very contemporary, really something that reaches out to the community. One of the things I'm planning to do are to sponsor, I want the open space so that I can have flexible movement of chairs and things like that, to offer things such as free English lessons. There's a very large number of immigrants in DuPage County. A lot of people don't realize it, but I sit on like a diversity committee at Christ Church of Oak Brook, and that's something that we're always discussing, ways to reach the community. And I practice immigration law, and so I really am a firm believer that people should learn English. And I know there are some people who don't want to, but actually, a lot of foreign people would like to, but they don't know how to access that. So I'd like to offer free lessons in, particularly in English. I was also previously an English teacher. And I would also like to offer other sort of life skills related to law programs through my, what I call my portable office studio. And so the way the current floor plan is, is very conducive to that, because it's actually just one square, rectangular room. It's 29 feet deep, it's 15 feet wide, and Mr. Sonoa has completely renovated the space. The attractive element for me was that there was no renovation required. I'm not seeking to build anything, I'm not even putting in a wall. What I'm seeking to do is to put in a really contemporary type of desk arrangement in the very front, in the store window part, as a law office, and then have that be flexibly movable and leave all the other space open for the purposes of community lessons and for dancing and for rehearsals, because I also perform. So the size of people that I would, in terms of scope of size, that would normally be in there, would probably be ranged from two to 12 people at any given time. The room is not particularly large, it's only approximately 450 square feet, so it's not really that big. And I'm really planning on lessons that are pretty much hands-on. I'm very much of a teacher at heart, and I was originally trained as a teacher, I have a master's degree in teaching from University of Chicago, and my passion is teaching. And so I will be doing, you know, things that come up that are of interest to the community.
Okay, very fine. Is there anybody from the public who wishes to speak on this subject, either for or against? Seeing no hands raised, we're gonna close the public comment. Staff?
Well, this is a unique mix of uses in one building. The small tenant space and limited class sizes should not create any adverse effects or parking concerns.
Okay, let's start with Commissioner Thomas, if you will.
You need a larger space just for the diplomas and certificates. I agree with the English teaching and that, in addition to your other passions and that. And I didn't understand what in your blueprint about law office and that, I understand now, especially since you're gonna keep the other facility.
Right, right.
Now granted, it won't bring in a whole lot of taxes for the thing, but we don't have, I don't like these open areas in the storefronts and that. And if it works, it's going to work, and I welcome you, and I support your effort.
Thank you.
Commissioner Pill?
Thank you. Yeah, I really don't have any questions. I mean, it's up to you to make it work. When I saw the square footage and then three businesses and 455 square feet, I said, I'm not sure how you're gonna make that work, but I know you're a very creative person, Teresa, and I know that if anybody's gonna make it work, you will, so good luck with your expansion.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yeah, I could see how the two, the law offices and the educational part fit together, but the dance, I just couldn't understand. I guess, being a dancer, now I understand. But are you going to teach dance class or just practice?
I, I will be teaching at some level, but it's probably not gonna be at the level like you would expect from some of the other studios in town, where, you know, I'm not having a whole curriculum of, you know, ballet, jazz, tap, hip-hop, the whole, I don't do that, because there's just so many competitors in that field. For example, you know, I will probably teach some kind of group lessons, like one week I might sponsor something like folk dance, okay? And so people will come and they'll get to learn how to do a particular nationality folk dance. And then another time, I particularly focus on interpretive dance. I perform for weddings and special events and conferences and things like that. So some of the time will be spent doing my own rehearsal for my own things, and hopefully drawing in people through the lessons that they'll see that there's a lot going on there.
Yeah, it's gonna be kind of a mix of different activities, it sounds like.
Yeah.
Okay. It now makes sense to me, and I think it's gonna be okay.
Okay.
I wish you the best, best of luck, and I understand the fact that we would love to have a tax-generating business there, but we need to have our storefronts filled. So, good luck.
Thank you.
I had a question as to how many dance students do you anticipate in your class if you were fully staffed?
I would say less, 12 or less.
And what would the hours of operation of the dance studio be?
Probably between 5:00 to 9:00 on Saturdays. And then I may do some occasional rehearsal of, probably more on a private basis on some Sundays. It just depends on when we have.
But that would be a very few people if you were to do.
Right, yes, yeah, it's just myself and two or three. Usually, I actually have a dance partner where we rehearse, and so we, it will vary according to how many people are in the dance.
And for staff, then, does this existing parking meet, does it meet all the requirements?
Yes, it does.
Even if there's 12 students?
Yeah, based on the number of instructors and the number of students that works.
And that's based on a limit of 12?
Um, yes, because I believe it's one, one space per seven students and one space per instructor.
So I guess the question is, to prevent either a parking problem or overcrowding issues or traffic problems, should there be a limit of 12 on the class size or a limit of 15 or some sort of limit? Or do we not care, pack 'em in and get the people downtown?
No, I think the limit of 14 would probably be a good idea, and based on the small size of the tenant space, you probably wouldn't be able to get too many more in there, anyway.
I don't know, an occupancy limit, that's something you'd have to look at also. So if that...
That's something the commissioners, if they're still feel like we can make a recommendation to the Board of Trustees.
Correct. Or alternatively, I'll take notes and...
Okay.
Pass that along to the board.
Good. And perhaps in, if you work all your students up to a real good appetite and get them all to go next door to Uncle Bud's...
Sure they will.
...for sales tax money.
I'm sure they will.
All right, any further questions? May we here have a reading of the findings of fact, which will be for all three special uses?
Criteria number one, the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the special use will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare. The proposed uses will be conducted indoors and will not be detrimental to the public welfare. There will be no anticipated adverse impacts due to noise, hours of operation, et cetera, from these uses. Criteria number two, that the special use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity if the purpose is already permitted, nor substantially diminish or impair property values within the neighborhood. All business activities in this existing tenant space will occur indoors and will cease by 9:00 PM. The operations are not expected to generate adverse light, noise, odor, or vibrations, and will not have adverse impacts on surrounding properties. Criteria number three, that the establishment of the special use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding property for uses permitted in the district. The surrounding area is completely built out, and the applicant is proposing to use an existing tenant space. Criteria number four, that adequate utilities, accessways, drainage, and/or other necessary facilities have been or are being provided. The property is already equipped with adequate utilities, drainage, and other necessary facilities. Criteria number five, that adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide ingress and egress so designed as to minimize traffic congestion in the public streets. Off-street parking is available for employees and customers. The daytime office use will generate minimal traffic. The evening classes will be small in size, and public transportation and public parking is available. Criteria number six, that the special use shall, in all other respects, conform to the applicable regulations of the district in which it's located, except as such regulations may in each instance be modified by the Village Board pursuant to the recommendation of the Plan Commission. The proposed uses do not require any variances, and the existing building either conforms to the bulk regulations of the zoning district or is a legal non-conforming structure. The proposed use meets the special conditions of special condition number two. The proposed uses will not result in appreciable traffic congestion or hazard to pedestrian safety. Class sizes will be small, and the office use will not generate significant daytime traffic. Off-street parking is available, and the property is located near public transportation. Additionally, public parking is available in the area.
If you agree with these findings, please raise your hand. We are unanimous in agreement. The findings of fact for a special use are hereby adopted and approved. Under planning and zoning item 13027, I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, item A, special use permit request to operate a ground floor attorney office in the B1 limited business district. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Pill, seconded by Commissioner Thomas. Question on the motion. A roll call, please.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Fidesco votes yes. Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Chairman Richard?
Yes. I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, item B, special use permit request to operate a ground floor dance studio in the B1 limited business district. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Pill, seconded by Commissioner Fidesco. Question on the motion. A roll call, please.
Commissioner Fidesco votes yes. Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Chairman Richard?
Yes. Okay, I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, item C, a special use permit request to operate educational classes on the ground floor in the B1 limited business district.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Fidesco, seconded by Commissioner Pill. Question on the motion. A roll call, please.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Fidesco votes yes. Chairman Richard?
Yes. Okay, you have our recommendation for approval, and again, staff can tell you when you go before the committee or the whole.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Planning and zoning item 13028, McGrath Lexus of Westmont, regarding the property located at 470 to 500 East Ogden, for the following. A, special use permit request to operate an existing automobile dealership in the B2 general business district with a cosmetic repair center that includes painting and body and fender work. B, zoning code variance request to permit a cosmetic repair center that includes painting and body and fender work within a 500-foot, within 500 foot of a residence district. Good evening, sir.
Hi, my name's William Buckley, middle initials K. So I thought that I'd start with making sure that everybody understands what our Mint Cosmetic Reconditioning Program, that our company, Dent Wizard, we're based out of St. Louis, and we have developed this program, and we go into a managing partnership with quality dealerships, and we've got about a dozen of these operating around the United States, and they're a, they're a good, good program for everybody. And I thought I'd run through a quick, probably take a few minutes just to go through this to get everybody's arms around what Mint Cosmetic Reconditioning is, because one of the things that I think people kind of gravitate to is, oh, my gosh, this is a body shop, it's gonna smell, it's gonna be noisy, it's gonna have a bunch of torn apart cars outside, and I really wanna make sure that everybody, you know, in the room and the, and the community understands that that's not the case. So to start out here, you know, what I just said, Mint Cosmetic Reconditioning, it focuses on smaller repairs. And those repairs typically are paintless dent repair, which is the process of removing door dings and small dents without doing any painting, basically massaging the metal out from the inside of the panel back to where it's, its original factory position, bumper scuff refinishing, alloy wheel refinishing, interior repairs, and spot panel repairs. So nowhere in there, you know, do we see any welding or framework or collision damage that a body, a typical body shop might attack. So we kind of say that the Mint program stops where the body shop starts, and we don't do any complete paint jobs, we do small cosmetic repairs. Our, our centers don't have any welders, any frame machines, or any heavy equipment. And 90% of the jobs that we do, they're small enough where they can be completed the same day. And this, this eliminates outside work in the parking lot. You know, the EPA and everybody's kind of cracking down on mobile people that cannot utilize the environmentally friendly water-based paints that are used by all the major manufacturers now, and which we use exclusively in our Mint Cosmetic Reconditioning Centers. So that's, that's just a quick overview there. I wanted to put up here, just I circled a couple things. Dent Wizard, we're the world leader in paintless dent repair, and we've expanded to be the nation's leader in cosmetic reconditioning. And Mint Center, once again, is eco-friendly, it's non-interruptive to other services that the dealership performs, I'll get into that in a second. It enhances customer retention, and the work is performed on-site. And then we talked about what it includes, dents and dings, minor paint damage, bumpers, and alloy wheels, no, no major collision work. I'm here a few pictures of, from other sites around the country of, these are a couple gentlemen working in a contained environment, refinishing alloy wheels that have been scraped or curbed while parking or otherwise. Here's a quick picture of a guy fixing a scuff on a corner, which is one of the most popular repairs that a Mint Cosmetic Reconditioning Center does, is a, is a small, you know, scuff on a corner when you get too close to a wall or curb another car, and hopefully leave the other, other person a note. Some of the, some of the repairs, we put loner wheels on, they're not necessarily designed for that exact car, they don't match the other side, but if we wanna keep a car going through maybe four or five hours worth of service at the dealership... through maybe four or five hours worth of service at the dealership, we can keep it moving through the service process while our repairs on these wheels are done simultaneously and then those two meet up at the end of the day so there's no inconvenience to the customer and it doesn't require additional days out with loner cars and things of that sort. A, here's a, here's a price menu for Mint Cosmetic Reconditioning Services and you can see, these are all pretty inexpensive repairs. Everybody on the committee here will give probably twenty percent off, so, anyway, but you see the, the paintless dent repair pricing, you know, a hundred and seventy-nine to two-hundred and seventy-nine dollars. A partial bumper, if you had a scuff on it would be three-hundred and ninety-nine dollars, a full bumper, five-ninety-nine. If you had a, you know, a key scratch on a door, five-ninety-nine. A small painted area, maybe you hit your mirror on the garage or going into a parking garage, a hundred and sixty-nine. Wet sand and polish, some scratches out of the vehicle, eighty-nine bucks. Wheel repairs, a hundred and seventy-nine, and headlight brightening and then, and so that, that kind of gives you an idea of our menu of services. So none of those are, none of those services are, are in the, in the realm of collision work. The, the Mint Center and the equipment, we use only the highest-end equipment there is as far as filtration, containment. The proposed site is inside the actual service department at McGrath Lexus, so the ownership and management there was, you know, very concerned. Are we going to smell anything? Is there going to be any dust? Is there going to be any fumes? This, because this is right next to where all our workers are, are going to be, you know, doing their regular mechanical work. So, we only use the best equipment available. It is self-contained. In this location, we're going to put a Eurovac dust collection system in, which is basically on your little Sanders, it's a vacuum system that collects all the dust so internally in the building, there's no dust floating around and particulates in the air. And then there's a mix room that contains all the paints. Here are a few pictures of existing sites that are up and running. There's, you can kind of see there's a, the paint area and then the, basically you have a paint area, a mix room, a paint area, and you have preparation areas. No, you know, no, no frame or heavy equipment or welding areas or things like that. So, that's one site. This is another Lexus store. This one actually was built in their parking deck. You have, once again, you have your mix room, your paint area for containment, and you have the, the preparation areas down on the end there. Here's some gentlemen working in, this, this area down here on the end is a, is a dust area that's got filtration in it and they're just getting ready to do some bumper repairs. Here's another one, this is in a small, small dealership back in the corner of their space, same thing, mix room, paint room, prep area. And then here's the design for the, for the shop at McGrath Lexus, and once again, this is right in their service department, so it's not out in the parking lot, no, no new buildings are going to have to be constructed for this. But here's your paint area on this side and your prep areas on the other and all these little lines going back and forth, that's that Eurovac dust collection system that I mentioned. The, the Mint Center coatings, a lot of people think that, you know, they think of paint, lacquer thinners stink, smell. We only use PPG water-based environmental, enviro-based paints, which is what I've got here. And I mean, this is, you know, this is the lowest VOCs of any paint line, this is a brand-new bottle and, I mean, it's, it's a hundred percent latex paint, so if anybody wants to smell it, I'm not going to pass out from that sniff I just took, but if anyone wants to smell it, they can, it's a, it doesn't smell like lacquer. The only, the only thing now that is a solvent base is your clear coats and so the, and actually they're working on water-based clear coats. So you have water-based primaries, you have a water-based base coat, and then you have a clear top coat. So it's getting, it's getting pretty good and the, well, the, one, one interesting thing is you can't do this on, outside, I mean, there's mobile spray units that do type, these types of repairs that have mobile permits. In fact, our company does mobile sites and has mobile units also, but you can't use these types of water-based paints outside. They, they, they're, they need a dry, heated, warm, a lot of airflow to make them work properly, so, but they're, they're super effective and like I said, all the manufacturers use those on the, on any of the newer cars and have been for probably the last ten years. This, this paint is, is compliant in every region of the United States, a hundred percent latex, same as house paint, and it's preferred by Lexus North America is another reason we use it and our clear coats are compliant also. Here's a quick picture of a, that's a whole bank of the, of the toners that, that mix up and make the various colors on the automobiles. And on the bottom here is your primer and your clear on the very bottom shelf. These little bags over here, this, this paint, another good thing is there's no waste. It has like a ninety-day shelf life, so if you mix up a burgundy for a Lexus bumper, you've got ninety days, you're probably going to see the same car again, so you don't have any waste and, and that's a good thing. I mean, we don't want to be dumping waste and having a safety clean coming over picking up five gallons worth of recyclable materials every week, so. On-site, you know, the bumpers are removed, so that puts the car in a, really not a legal status to move around on a public street without a bumper. These are simultaneous repairs with the, with the program where the, you know, these repairs are done, the bumper's taken off the car, it goes through its normal service, the bumper's painted, the car goes back together, and the delivery's at five o'clock. Super convenient to the customer and wheels off and, and they're repaired sometimes while the car's up in a lift. If it's got a three or four sixty thousand mile service, three, four hour service, we can take the wheels off, repair them at the same time, and put them back on the vehicle. There's no added vehicles on, onsite or parking. Actually, it probably reduces parking, which is a concern at McGrath, their parking's tight, their, their, their used car inventory can be turned faster. Their, their customers won't need additional loner cars and additional days in loner cars and there won't be, you know, cars waiting in line to get this type of service because it's only, only offered to those customers that come in on a daily basis already through the service drive. You know, potential revenues generated to the local economy is about seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand annually, it's supplemental McGrath Lexus revenues, everything's done, once again, indoors and it's, it's really not a feasible program off-site or five-hundred feet away just because of the reasons I've mentioned about, you know, the car is not being able to be drive, the wheels off, and things like that. So, quick, quick example of flow charts here, this is on the wheel repair process up front, the wheels are removed, the scheduled service is started and the, and the wheels are repainted and then they're reinstalled, then the delivery to the customer, and basically the same one for an operational process on a bumper repair. And the, about done here, so the special use standards recap that I put together, you know, it's really not detrimental to the public in any form, it's not injurious to the neighboring properties in any way, happens to be a body shop right behind here with, I think, three or four paint booths in it, I don't have any idea if they're using enviro-based types of paints, but, you know, it's, there's no impact on the normal development, no additional utilities are draining, our, our facilities are necessary, really no effect on traffic because nothing's being increased, if anything, I think decreased a little bit. And we would have to conform with any other requirements that the building and, and the village would require. So that's it. I had any, and then basically any, any questions, which I'm sure there are, I hope I can answer them and, and I thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll go to the public and they may just have a few questions for you.
Okay, yeah.
So, anybody from the public, if you would please, get up, sign in, give us your name?
Okay.
Now, a few folks came in late, so let me know if you were not sworn in.
Get my stuff out of the way for you here.
I already signed in. My name's Anthony Meston, I am on the Board of Directors of the Citadel Homeowners Association. We're probably the only residents in Westmont that would be affected by this. Our management company, which is EPI, they notified me yesterday as well as the day before of, we have a hundred and forty-four homeowners. We've had over ninety either email them or call in to be against this project. Whether right or wrong, that's how they feel. There's many reasons for it. One of, some of the reasons are EPA requirements and people are worried about what they're going to breathe because they're not used to any work being done at that site, at that facility. Another thing is in regards to what's currently going on at the Toyota dealership, Bob Roorman. That's adjacent to about fifteen townhouses. Now, they're already zoned to do what they want, but they do a second shift now, which they didn't do previously. Eight o'clock, nine o'clock, ten o'clock, eleven o'clock at night, those homeowners, all they hear is banging. And if anybody would like to go there, I could take you there and show you. Also, the parking lot is lit up brighter than it used to be. So if you're any, if you're a home, yes, sir?
Okay, please, we can't talk about Toyota because that's not germane to the issue we're talking about, Lexus.
That's to my point. If this zoning is changed, how do you stop bodywork happening? Maybe, maybe this company Mint doesn't survive. Westmont Body Works is there, they, they do a great job. They're a great neighbor. We have forty-foot aphidite trees that cover their area. They don't do second shift, you can't see what they do, and their work is done north and south. At, at our end of the facility, we are directly east, so they don't affect us at all, they do a great job. If Mint comes in, I mean, I'm not a mechanic, my brother is, my grandfather was, maybe they won't survive. What are they fixing? Hubcaps? My point is, and the homeowner's point is, if in fact this passes, how do we stop a second shift? To my point, we already saw what happened with Bob Roorman. If you live there, you're not going to be able to sell your townhouse for the same price of someone who lives in the back. Why? When you leave, when you open your sliding door where your kitchen or dining room is, you see bright lights and you hear banging from Bob Roorman Toyota that is, is zoned to do what they're doing, but all you hear is banging all night. And I could show anybody on the board this. So that's one of our points. The lights are another point that many homeowners, especially the ones who live in the northern section, are complaining about because the lights at Bob Roorman are now brighter. It's been like that for a year and a half. If you live there, you'd say, why did I move here? What's going on? I got thrown a curveball. If this zoning changes, what happens? How do the homeowners stop this zoning change? How do you stop from competing with Westmont Body Works and all of a sudden we're going to do some real bodywork, not just touch-up work? Now, that's just a couple issues, but I feel from this gentleman's presentation, there's no comparison with Westmont Body Works and what they do and what they're zoned to do versus this. There's no lights at Westmont Body Work on except a couple small little lights, and again, we have forty-foot aphidite trees that cover the area. So they're a great, great neighbor and they're zoned to do that. And when people bought into Citadel on the pond, they knew Westmont Body Works was there. They've been thrown a curveball with Bob Roorman Toyota, very noisy, I'd like to take anybody through there and you'll see that I'm not lying. Some of that work's done past midnight and you know how it is, this is the suburbs, not the city, everything reverberates the littlest sound. And I represent the homeowners and our management company informed me yesterday, we had over ninety complaints, basically, not complaints, just saying, no, go to this meeting and tell the board honestly and nicely how we feel. And, you know, that's what I'm doing. And that's besides the point of EPA, people are, there are some people who are worried about painting going on there because when they bought their homes there, there was no painting going on and we have to respect that. So, that's, that's basically how our homeowners feel, there's a hundred and forty-four of them and, again, not to disagree with you, but we're using Bob Roorman as a, as a point because it's a major, major, it's a pain in the neck and those people who are selling their homes are never going to get the value that they had prior to Bob Roorman only working one shift. So if, if there's an increase in jobs, two, three, ten jobs, well, guess what? Tell the fifteen homeowners that just lost money on their house because only an idiot would buy a townhouse when all you hear is all night long plus bright lights either on your kitchen or your dining room. If you, one homeowner has stated, because they have kids, that basically they, the bedroom, they don't even have shades, they just put sheets over because the light comes right in because of the angle where, where their home is. So we're, again, we're concerned if a zoning change does happen, it's changed, now you could do whatever you want to do. You could do bodywork, you could do three shifts. You could do heavy-duty painting or you could try to do the stuff that Westmont Body Works does, but again, they're a good neighbor, they're, they're zoned to do it and they're, they're more than five-hundred feet away. And I, I'd like to walk with anybody, not to be repetitive, but I could show you each area of our subdivision that is affected by Toyota and as well as will be affected by McGrath Lexus. So if you have any questions for me, I'll answer them. Other than that, I'm finished.
No, I think at this time we would allow the gentleman for a minute to respond to your concerns.
Sure.
I'd like to say something. My name is Tom Christiansen.
Sure.
I'm the Service and Parts Manager from McGrath Lexus.
My wife drives a Lexus, by the way.
If you would, please, yeah. Go to the microphone.
I did swear you in, correct?
Yes, and I'm signing.
Okay, would you sign in and?
Sign in.
Speak at the podium though, the home audience cannot hear you.
Oh, sure, I'm sorry. Again, my name is Tom Christiansen, I'm the Service and Parts Manager from McGrath Lexus. I've been with McGrath Lexus since nineteen ninety-one when we first opened up. Mike McGrath, our owner, is very proud of his facility, he's proud of creating jobs. He, I don't know the exact number, but I'm guessing between the Lexus and AccuStory, spends tens of thousands of dollars every year on landscaping alone. When the world broke in two thousand eight and things got hard, everything had to tighten up a little bit. We have lost twenty positions over the last four or five years and we, we find this is obviously a revenue stream, but also a way to create more jobs. Seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand in additional revenue is no small change. We are also very good neighbors with Westmont Body Works, we have no problem with them, they have no problem with us. And if you were to look at the design of the, the paint booth, where it's going, if there were any fumes, they would actually fly over the top of the body shop to get to the homeowners. We've had a few complaints from the homeowners since we expanded, one about lights, we put some shields on the lights to accommodate. We've had some complaints about noise, so we've encouraged our employees not to beep the horns in the back lot to, to keep the noise down. And I, I don't know what happens at Bob Roorman's, but I think he built Citadel, what was the deal he had with Westmont to put up his car dealership twenty years ago or so. But that's between him and the city and you. All I know is we try to be good neighbors, we don't ever do anything that's, you know, out of line and I think, I don't know for a fact, but I think if we wanted to open up a second shift right now, we could do it anyway as a car dealer. We just don't have the need to do that right now, nor are we looking at it in the near future, but this is a, a revenue stream for us that, that we think we could sell some additional things that aren't quite body shop worthy, more cosmetic, and that these things are happening right now anyway. Maybe not in our lot, but they're happening close by. And we are very concerned about the environment and our employees as well. That's why we partnered with Mint or hope to partner with Mint because they've got all the right answers. If you have any questions about safety, environmental, ask them, they've got all the right answers. We don't go into this lightheartedly, just so you know, so, thank you.
Well, to respond to that, I don't know where they got the economic analysis from, that's a seven-hundred-and-fifty K to the Westmont economy, maybe they're right, maybe they're wrong, but anybody can make those numbers up. I didn't even mention the beeping. No one's complaining about that, but to say that there's going to be less traffic, how does that happen? How do you get more business with less traffic? We're all intelligent people. There's going to be more traffic. Okay, he says they bring in jobs, what about the people who live behind there? What are they going to do? They're stuck with the Bob Roorman situation. So once this zoning changes and Mint is gone, okay, what stops the next company from going in and doing heavy-duty painting? Doing heavy-duty bodywork? What do you tell the homeowners? Oh, it's good for McGrath Lexus, it's good for Mint? Well, that, sorry, we don't buy that. We didn't do anything wrong. We're just getting thrown a lot of curveballs and that's why we're here talking to you to see if you could stop this.
Do you have any questions for me at all?
Okay, folks, please come up to the podium, one at a time. Sign in and give your name.
Hi, I'm Kathleen McCabe, I live at six, six, four-six Citadel Drives and, and I am a homeowner there, along with my husband. We live behind the Toyota dealership and so just down the street is where this body shop would be built and when I listen to all, and thank you for the comments about, you know, what we can expect and, and all those types of things, and it's good to know all of that. But I do, I had looked into this and noted that if a body shop does not operate in compliance with regulations, which could happen down the road, then what happens is, is it emits dangerous chemicals into the air that act as pollutants. So, I know that, you know, it's great that Mint is able to do things and they're compliant and they, they're safe and so forth, but should the day come where they're not there anymore or they change their standards or they don't follow regulations, then dangerous emissions or pollutants will... emissions or pollutants will enter the air. Um, I do have a suggestion also, um, what about considering moving that, um, body shop to the commercial side instead of having it be right flush up against our units, having it relocated into a different area? Um, again, to the point that Tony was making, that, you know, we're, we're looking at the future, uh, we're speaking now on our behalf for the future of Citadel on the Pond. Thank you.
The drawing show that it's in the farthest northwest corner, which puts it right adjacent to BMW and actually to the west of Westmont Auto Works. To the west, you're to the east. That's what the drawing show, just for the record.
Can I go?
Please.
Thank you. My name is Arlene Berger, I live at five-one-three Citadel Circle, and I am concerned about this request for the special use permit and zoning code variance before you this evening, PZ thirteen zero-two-eight. This request will allow an auto body shop in our backyards. I have heard it said that McGrath Lexus has no intent on having this be a big change in their operations, and I've heard it said that they already do paint and body work there, so it isn't a big deal. And I've heard it said that they can't use the, that they can't use the land by Route eighty-three for this purpose, so don't even bring that up. I also heard it said that it's a done deal, and I shouldn't waste my time coming to this open meeting. While I come to you this evening because I have trust in you, I have a lot of trust in the process, and I really think that, um, McGrath Lexus has applied for these variances because they have a plan.
May I stop you for one moment?
Of course.
Who told you this was a done deal? Because I resent.
I know.
The inference whatsoever that I have prejudged this.
No, just general talking, like when you talk with people and say, gee.
Whoever told you that is full of BS.
I agree, that's why I'm here.
Okay.
But when you present that on television to everyone, it certainly gives the implication that something's been agreed to ahead of time.
Oh.
And I find that offensive myself also.
True, I understand, and I don't mean it that way. I think that there's a general cynicism about things like this, especially when you have an organization that's tax generating, and then you have people. And people were saying, why go? It's a done deal, don't bother. So I'm really pleased to see that there were people in here almost, I mean, I've seen some of the shows, um, on TV when you have your meetings and no one comes. So I'm pleased that people do believe in the process, and we are here and we're having a healthy discussion. So, I apologize, I didn't mean to offend you, I just wanted to say, I'm here because I do believe in the process, and I think this is a healthy discussion and informative. Um, I am trusting that you are going to listen to the concerns and you'll take them seriously because we really believe, those that live in this neighborhood, that it is going to have an impact on our neighborhood. We believe that, I mean, we are a residential community, yes, we're close to Ogden, we realize that, and we all know that car dealerships are an important partner in our community. But it's also really important for us to remember, why do we have zoning ordinances? Why do we have these rules? It's to protect the health and well-being of our citizens, to maintain integrity of our neighborhoods. To grant the body shop within five hundred feet of a resident district, I believe is a mistake. There are toxic fumes, noise, and other environmental pollutants that go hand-in-hand with any kind of auto body shop. I'm also concerned with property values going down. I respect your expertise and your specialized training in engineering, construction, project management. Please protect the citizens of Westmont by denying this request. And if you are seriously discussing this, I think we should look at the MSDS sheets that are available for these products. It's one thing to say they're safe. Well, what are the MSDS sheets on them? And what are, what are the cautions that we should be looking at? And you are experts, you know how to look at those, I wouldn't know how to look at that. Um, what kind of venting is going to be used? What, how high above the roof line is it going to be? Would the emissions meet the standards of California, which is supposedly the strongest, has the strongest standards in the state, in the country? And finally, what hardship would there be to the car dealership if this special, um, variance isn't granted? I don't think that there would be a hardship. So I urge you to deny the request, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Would you care to answer the ladies' questions?
Sure. Um, yeah, I'm, I'm not sure where to start, I mean, I think the, and I, I tried to explain it in my brief presentation, I, you know, body shop and Mint and cosmetic reconditioning, in my opinion, are completely two different things. I mean, there's, there's mobile painters that, um, that operate on car lots all over the place that do this type of work outside, and, and we're, you know, I think we're, we're a better partner by containing it and bringing it inside the building. Um, it's, it's a little, um, you know, when you've got a real, true collision repair shop next door of, of significant size, and they're not causing any grief or problem or smell or noise, um, it, it takes our little shop down to about one fiftieth of that, and I'll, I'll use space, maybe one twentieth of that possibility, and we don't do any of the repairs, and when I say any of the, any of the heavy repairs that a body shop does. So, um, you know, some of the things about complacency, those are all regulated very stringently by the state, by the city, by local ordinances, by the EPA. Um, I mean, we go, we go to, to huge lengths to use the, this is the most expensive paint you can buy, and, and we like it, we use it, it doesn't smell, I can take the cap off this, like, I don't want to drink it, but, um, you know, I mean, I could pour this out on this desk right here, and you wouldn't be able to smell a thing. So that's, now, you know, the clear coat is a solvent base, but it's, it's a, it's a minor, you know, it's a, it's one coat of the vehicle, and the emission points are all governed, you know, ten feet above the roof level, these are all governed by law, and, um, you know, we, we think that Illinois, along with New York, where we put one in, uh, Pace Greenwich BMW Service Center up there, they were, they were as strict as, as you can imagine. And we complied with everything and every ordinance they had, had, we've never had any complaints from any neighbors. Lexus of Bellevue, which happens to be the, the city I live in, Washington, um, we have residents within five hundred feet and condominiums of, of their store, we've never had one complaint. We don't really make a lot of noise, we're doing cosmetic repairs. Uh, when we take a, a bumper off, you know, it's, it's three or four screws, and it's a, it's not a hammer and, a sledgehammer and, 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 you know, pounding noises like that. Probably the noisiest thing we use is a, is an air sander, and I, I really feel contained in, inside of that building. Uh, I don't believe that there's any chance anybody could ever hear anything outside of that building. And I wouldn't, you know, I'd, I'd be straight, I mean, if we're running, you know, if we're real busy, or there, or the dealership needs some cars reconditioned, and we have to work till eight or nine o'clock at night, I don't think there's, I don't think anybody would hear a peep out of that building. I think if they did, there should be, you know, noise ordinances, if it was that bad, that would, that would take, take the, into, you know, take that into consideration, or come say you're making too much noise. But I, I don't believe that's a concern, uh, as far as the noise, the pollutants, um, and the type of work we do. I mean, I think that, once again, cosmetic reconditioning, the only reason it's categorized under body shops is because it does have a paint booth. And, um, we don't, you know, that's, we don't, we don't do any, uh, any heavy collision work, frame machines, banging, welding, and things like that. None of this work's done outside, and it's all, and it's all contained inside the building. So I think that's, that would be my response.
Thank you. Yep.
I haven't signed in yet.
My name is Jan Bouyan, and I am here with my neighbors to urge you to deny this request by McGrath Lexus. We are a community of young families with young children, like the people who live next door to me, midlife adults, and retired citizens with grandchildren like myself. We have a school bus that collects and delivers children twice a day, and neighbors who walk, bike, and run. Like you, we like to open up our windows for, to the fresh air on beautiful fall days like today. We're a quiet community, close to parks, shopping, and schools. We have a nursing home right in between two car, car dealerships behind us. We recognize that tax revenue is important, we pay taxes. But I contend that granting these variances will not sell more cars, granting these variances will not raise more tax revenues. If you say no to this auto painting request, Lexus is not going to move their operation. Ordinances are written to protect us, and as much as I appreciate the previous information on Mint, as I understand it, the dealership already owns this type of facility on Pasquale Drive that is not near a residential community. However, by doing the right thing and denying this request, you will do the following. You'll protect the air quality and the health of our citizens, you'll protect the property value of our homes, you will be following the law and the village ordinances meant to protect the public welfare. You will be requiring the dealership to be in compliance with the law. So I urge you to deny this request to put another auto painting facility within a stone's throw of our residential neighborhood. Thank you.
I, I do appreciate your concerns.
If, please, the home audience just cannot hear you.
I do appreciate your concerns about the environment and, and the neighborhood, and again, we've always, always done our best to be good neighbors. Uh, we, we, like I say, we had some concerns about the lights, we put, we put, um, shields on the lights.
I have them on motion sensors.
Please let him respond, and then you can ask him more questions.
Well, some of the lights are for security reasons. Um, I guess motion could, and we could look into that, but, but I'm sorry you're having these problems with the, with the Toyota dealership, but I don't see how that, that is us. I mean, we've never, I don't think that I know of any, caused anybody any trouble that we didn't address, if there was a concern. Uh, and again, i- it's, it's on the other side of a body shop from you, if there, if you spent the time, I guess, to look at the, the plans and, and the, the submittal that we put in, I think that might answer a lot of your questions, it really would.
Again, and, sorry, again, not to be repetitive, they keep saying the body shop next to us. Okay, I live right, could see the body shop, Westmont Body Works. There's forty-foot aphrodite trees. You can't see it. You can't. They do the work north and south, it's adjacent to the west. There's no comparison, there's no second shift, there's no lights in the parking lot. They're great neighbors, I'm just telling you a fact. They keep saying comparison, there's no comparison. That's a lie. You can't compare it. It's not apples to apples, it's apples to watermelons.
You're comparing us to the Toyota dealer for no good reason, I don't understand that.
Nope, but because if this gets passed, slow down, you didn't hear me before, if it gets passed, when Mint leaves, because they might go out of business, or unless they're going to be there forever, but suppose they're not, now you're passed for another zoning law. How do we stop second shift? How do we stop a different type of painting? How do we stop that you don't do the same bodywork that Westmont Body Work does? You can't because we can't stop it because you're already zoned to do it. That's my point. That's one of the points that, that's being raised here. So once the zoning changes, you could do whatever by what you want to do.
I'd like to interrupt to make a clarifying point, if I may.
Yes, ma'am.
This special use permit is for the spray booth. The, the code and the language request, or states that it's, um, a section where, you know, you have to have a special use if you're going to have bodywork or painting. This is specifically for the painting booth. Previously, in, in your presentation, you mentioned that there'd be a zoning change. I just want to state for the record, there is no proposed zoning change here. The paint booth is permitted in the zoning district that we're talking about by special use permit through this process.
A special use permit, but they did show on the presentation that there was some bodywork being done. So all of a sudden, we go from sanding bumpers to actually taking off front ends and putting front ends on.
That requires a new and separate special use to do bodywork, correct? Other than the minor work that they're doing.
Right.
If you were to have a body repair shop, that requires a new and separate special use, which they are not getting today, that, that they already, in the zoning classification, can do the minor, uh, repairs, sanding, things like that. So what they're really getting the special use for, as Shannon pointed out, is the spray painting booth.
Well, we still have a concern with that as well, especially with the lighting in the parking lot.
And, and one of the charges of this commission is to determine if reasonable conditions may need to be applied to this special use permit, so we haven't gotten to the point where you'll hear, um, that part of the conversation.
Well, I would hope that, um, before a decision is made, if anyone would like to come with me or speak to the homeowners who live over there, I, I mean, I, I know you guys don't live there, but we're the ones affected by it. No one else, you're not affected by it because you don't live there. It's like telling somebody to bust their children, but they, they live somewhere far away where the kids are getting bussed. This is our neighborhood, so we have the right to say, you know what, we're worried about our property value. Because the people who live by the, by the Toyota dealership, their property value went in the toilet. And, you know, just, just a fact, that's all it is. So I, I just don't want to hear the comparison with Westmont Body Works because there is none. Thank you, sir.
I'll, I'll make one quick more comment. The, um, uh, you know, we just installed the one I just talked about in New York, and it's actually in a same, similar situation of this, and it's, uh, next to it is a, is a, um, office health, uh, some sort of a hospital supply company. And, um, you know, we, we just, I, I, once again, we've never had any concerns with any complaints about smell. Those, uh, Bob Tunison and Joe Solano, who are the two managers of that store, actually flew to Seattle to stand and see if they could smell anything out, you know, coming out the exhaust on the roof of the Lexus dealership there. Um, and I think a bigger concern is, do you think McGrath Lexus would, would allow, right next to, within ten feet of their own employees working hazardous materials and, and fumes and, and toxic waste and all this? I think we're, we're, we're kind of leaning towards the wrong spectrum of what we do, how compliant it is, um, the, the coatings we use, and how small the repairs are. And, um, I, I keep hearing about the lights, we're not, we're not outside, and we're, we're contained inside the building, so I don't know what the lights have to do with this, um, request, but, um, I think that's it. And I mean, I appreciate all the, the comments, and I knew these types of concerns would come up, but I believe that, um, that, that no, we'd be, you know, virtually invisible to any, any neighbors or anything else. We're not only behind trees, we're behind the walls of the building, so, that's it.
Thank you.
My name is Mary Jane Fitzpatrick, and I live at seven fourteen, which is right opposite Lexus. Actually, your light standard, because you brought up the lights, the light standard is within twenty to twenty-five feet of my living room and bedroom windows. And the shields you put up, they're eight and a half by eleven, and one of them has been missing for a very long time. My house is illuminated all night.
I've not heard that from you or anybody else.
Well, uh, you know, if, we, we complained three, for about three years about the, uh, the alarms going off. That's how they would find the cars in the parking lot, they'd push the alarm, and then instead of, you know, having to walk around, look for the car, they'd set the alarm up. That took us quite a while to get rid of that sound. Um, yes, I'm right up against Lexus, I'm at seven fourteen, I mean, I can walk ten steps and touch the fence. So what my question is, are you giving the variance approval to this company or to Lexus? This says a variance approval for Lexus.
Correct.
So they're not obligated to keep this company, are they? Is there, are they obligated to only use this one company?
Well, that's a good question, and, uh, I'll try and answer. First of all, I, I probably need some clarification from the applicant. Is Mint going to be, is it Mint employees who are operating, uh, this segment of the business for the benefit of McGrath Lexus?
Yeah, we're the, um, we're, excuse me, we're the managing partners with Lexus. We, um, we come in, we set up the program, uh, we hire the employees, and we, um, you know, do work solely for the convenience and the use for Lexus customers only.
Okay. So, to answer your question, although this was processed through the agenda and on behalf of McGrath Lexus, the special use is going to run, uh, be granted to this company Mint because they're the ones who are doing the operation, who are hiring the employees to perform the work. And the ordinance of the village for special uses is that if Mint ceases, uh, to operate the, this use, uh, the special use terminates. If Mint sells seventy-five percent or more of their company to a new owner, the special use terminates. And any new owner would then have to come in and get a new special use, and at that point, you'd have some benefit of what their operating history was like and whether there are, in fact, any problems.
Thank you for clarifying that, because, you see, that's what we're... Thank you for clarifying that, because, you see, that's what we're all worried about. If the variance was for Lexus, who knows what would happen in six months or a year? You know, would they do their own body work and expand it, or do whatever? So that was a big concern, yes. And I do live, you know, within 20 feet of the fence between my house and Lexus, so I'm a very close neighbor to Lexus.
Judy Peterson. I can't help but compare with Toyota, and I'm sorry. I started with Toyota's building back here, whatever year that was. The one thing I do want to say is that, and again, it's Toyota, and Lexus, I don't live right by them, but the codes are not, Lexus, or Toyota doesn't follow the codes. They don't do whatever is written down, which I do have. My problem is the village. In all these years, whenever I call the village or go in, which I did last week, because of violations, there isn't one person who hasn't said, but there is, what can we do about it? So if we let in another company, the same thing can go on. If you try to do something through the village, they'll say, but what can we do? Again, Toyota started here, and we have had nothing but problems all these years. Thank you.
Ms. Peterson, which property are you at?
672.
Thank you.
And maybe, Mr. Chairman, I should address this concept of imposing special conditions or protections on a special use permit. If this commission and ultimately the village board is inclined to grant the special use, there are protections that can be put in place that hopefully would help protect the surrounding neighbors. So for example, we've got performance standards for noise and for smoke and particulate matter that's airborne. That's already in the code. And if, if those decibel levels or the emission standards are violated per village ordinance, the village can take appropriate action. And we've done that before, when we've had complaints. We've had a decibel meter reading level, standing at the property line of the residence, measured the noise level to determine if there's a violation, and in one particular case, required an owner to take some corrective action so they could comply with the standards. That's one issue. This is an indoor use, so lighting, whatever lighting's existing, isn't really pertinent. That might be a separate issue for you guys, but not pertinent to this request. Hours of operation is something that the village can look at and potentially limit. However, if the operations are all indoors with doors closed, that might be less of an issue. I guess we can talk amongst ourselves and at the village board level as to any other protections. Your question then may be, well, what happens if these special conditions are violated? Normally, we put in that, you know, there's a warning that goes out, we try and resolve the issues. If we can't resolve the issues, then we bring the applicant into the village board for a hearing, kind of like an evidentiary hearing, to find out if the special conditions have been violated. And if so, the special use can be revoked. So that's the ultimate power the board has.
So the village would stand behind it?
If it's in an ordinance and there's a provision to revoke the special use, yes, the village board can take action.
Is there anybody else who will speak on this? Please, if you would. Did I swear you in, sir?
Yes, sir. My name's Michael Menini. I live at 710 Citadel. I'm directly behind Lexus dealership. Although I appreciate not having to turn my lights on most of the time, because I have an issue with the lights, the sound, the inconvenience of the business in there, I was there first. The dealership came after. There is a little wall back there that used to function when the strip mall, that used to be there, was all right. Now I'm dealing with a growth, grow business. I don't want to stop them from doing their business. I agree, they have to make money. Everyone has to make money. But I live there now. And I've been there for 12 years, and it's an inconvenience for me. You're making promises, they're making promises, and in six months or a year, all those promises go away. What I'd like to see is a barrier wall, dividing our property with the business, that I don't have to hear it, I don't have to see it. The lighting issue they have, they got the wrong lights up there, especially in the back. And I'd like to see something done with that. And if I can use that as a negotiation to help get what I need, to try and stop this painting booth, if everything goes according to plan, then I'd like to do that. And I hope that this board would help us deal with some of the issues that we have. Now, I've dealt with two broken windows, coming up with different complaints because of the noise and the issues. Remember when they were buying out those big V8 cars and selling the program for the government, giving you money back? It was our property that they put the cars back there, and they were revving the hell out of these things until they blow up in the middle of the night. And they're just back there having a good time, and that's when I started getting the abuse. And like I said, the lights, the trees are growing so much that they're knocking the lights all to hell when the storm comes through, and I'm worried those lights are going to come down on my property. And I can't sell the place the way it is to get the kind of money I want. I'm asking for a little help here. A single person can't do anything. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't think I have anything else to say. You know, I mean, I do appreciate all the comments and concerns. You know, I've expressed everything I can as far as the complacency. I mean, we have to, once again, we have to be 100% compliant with a lot of regulations and things that the fire marshal will require, and the MSDS sheets on every product we use and things like that. You know, I can just reiterate the fact that we're not a body shop. I like the idea of some control on the, on the village's part. I mean, we have no problem. I've got the same situation in Portchester, New York, where we agreed, we're not, we don't do collision repair. We don't do complete repaints on vehicles. And we don't. So that's, you know, maybe that's a consideration. But I think everybody would be, I don't want to say pleasantly surprised, because that's not really the tone of it, but, you know, we're not going to cause any problems. And I don't believe the dealership would let us, you know, make, you know, loud, you know, annoying, if it was loud enough inside that building, right next to their employees, it would have to be, to bother somebody that far away. It had to be really, you know, it would have to be a lot of noise. And we just don't make any noises. Like I said, we run Sanders that are, I don't know what the decibels are, but they're relatively quiet. And taking a bumper off, or a mirror off, or a wheel off, I mean, it's being done all day long at the dealership right now. And I don't know if there's any complaints coming out of noise, coming from that building, but we would be, you know, less noise than that. So I just wanted to thank everybody, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who will speak to this, from the public?
Just, now, signing in, I wasn't sworn in, because I didn't expect to say anything, but listening to the conversation, I thought I'd just ask one question.
Is anybody else?
I'm at 650 Citadel. And I know we talked about-
If you'd please raise your hand.
Oh, sure.
I swear that any testimony I give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and not but the truth, so help me God.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So my only question is, we talked about monitoring noise and particulate, but being to the east, most of the wind usually comes from the west. So I understand what the gentleman says about water-based paint. I work in packaging, so I'm familiar with water-based paint, solvent-based paint, and water-based doesn't smell. But with the wind coming from the west, right now, the only concern is the lacquer and the clear coat. And you're doing small amounts, so I understand that it probably does not exceed a certain emission level. But who's going to monitor that? And if we approve the painting booth, right now, they're doing small stuff, bumpers, but, you know, maybe you're not doing collision work, but a nice Lexus rolls in, and they got a whole scrape along the fender. What's to say they're not going to bring the car in this little booth, but they could take the fender off and do that, and all of a sudden, emissions increase just because of the clear coat? So I know enough to be dangerous, but I don't know if doing fenders and bumpers and all that with the clear coat would exceed emissions. So my only question would be, who's going to monitor the emissions? Is that the state of Illinois? Is that Westmont? You know, sometimes you don't smell it, but there's emissions. So that would be my only question.
Thank you.
You know, I know the, that the village doesn't have a policy of going out and monitoring emissions of all the various businesses. Ultimately, that lies with, you know, a resident to make a complaint, and then the village will respond appropriately, whether that is forcing the operator to stand at the property line with the appropriate testing equipment, and the village's presence to take the appropriate readings, or to call in the IEP and have them investigate. I apologize, I don't know exactly how the village would respond. I know from practice how we responded to a noise complaint, and I described that.
I'm sorry, should I just, even though it's up, may I say this one right there?
Never deny a woman the right to talk.
Thank you. I wasn't aware that we could ask you questions, so. I guess the bottom line is, why is this ordinance 500 feet within residences? And if that's the case, why would, obviously, it's got to be for a reason, to protect the citizens. So why would any of us want to do something that goes against a well-written ordinance that's theirs for a reason?
Thank you.
Just last, last comment I had, just, you know, the, the situation with painting a side panel, we do spot panel, you know, painting, but I don't think, it's still, it's still not entire cars. And the other comment I had, we did just California air quality, which is very, very stringent, somebody mentioned that earlier. We just got approval for our program with our paints to do the work at Newport Beach Lexus, which is dead center in Newport Beach, surrounded within probably 100 feet of office buildings and complexes of that, so, and restaurants and things like that. So I'm not, I'm not sure what that says for the program, but I think it speaks for itself.
Did you say you have approval for it?
Yes, yes.
From?
From California air quality.
Will there be any more public comment?
You swore me in already. My name is Florence Venisi. I'm a past board member of Citadel on the Pond. I live at 651, not by the Toyota dealership and not by Lexus. I wasn't going to speak, because my husband is a former employee of Lexus, and he told me where it was going to be located and all of that. My question is, what are the hours of operation going to be? The same as the dealership or different hours? If it's the same as the dealership, that's reasonable. If they're going to be able to have different hours, that comes into play. I realize that this is within the building that's already there and contained, and also by the BMW dealer. So it's really not right up against. But having been on the board of the Townhouse Association, I am very familiar with the homeowners. And those who do live behind Lexus, as Mr. Menini said, they see everything that's going on. They can see from upstairs, they can look right down into the parking lot. So perhaps a solution to some of our problem would be some kind of barrier, a wall, whatever. And not to beat Toyota to death, but when they did put up the parking facility, those homeowners were tremendously impacted. Now it turns out, right now, it's probably all right that that happened, because they don't have to look at the cars, and they don't hear, in that regard, those people. But now, the section where Lexus is, there's only a small fence and a retaining wall. And those homeowners, like I said, I am not one of them, but it does impact me also, because it is our home, and it does affect the resale of our properties. So I don't know if something can be done in regards to a privacy issue, if that will make some of the homeowners feel better. We're all very concerned about the fumes, and I understand what you said about the paint and all that. But still, the control can be, it can get out of control very quickly. That's it.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Okay, we'll close the public comment. Let's go to staff.
As the attorney noted, the commission may wish to address some of the concerns that were raised tonight by recommending additional conditions after discussion and consideration. If the proposal were to be appro-
Can you hear me? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. The commission may wish to address some of the concerns that were raised by recommending additional consider, conditions such as hours of operation or limiting the scope of work.
Okay, let's start with Commissioner Fidesco.
Okay. I have a question based on one of the comments, the last comments, as far as working hours. What are the planned working hours for your business within the business, within the Lexus dealership?
Well, the, you know, in, in the other 11 shops like this, you know, I would say that we typically are open the same hours as the sales department, which does sometime, you know, service is usually open until 6:00 or 7:00, and sales is usually open until 9:00. Now, we do have instances, and I don't want to tell somebody that we're going to, you know, shut the clock down at 5:00 o'clock and not be able to do any work. It's kind of a, it's an on-demand situation, how much work we have, how much the dealership supplies. And I would have to say that, you know, there may be days that we'll work past 6:00 o'clock, you know. So I think, once again, it's not, it's not noise or light or anything that, that, that working a little bit after hours would, you know, would bother anybody. But, you know, I want to, you know, I want to be straightforward with everybody and say, hey, we, you know, sure, everybody wants to get out of there, start at 7:00, get out of there at 5:00, 5:00 or 6:00. And 90% of the time, that happens. But I, there is occasions when we have extra work and we, and we work later.
Okay, let me put it a different way. Do your employees carry keys to the buildings that you have your businesses in?
Um, no, they don't have keys.
Okay, you've answered my question and my concern. In other words, you're not going to be there if the dealership is closed?
No.
That was my question.
We don't have that type of access.
Okay.
Steve, to make it easy, you want to ask, what's the start time and what is the latest end time? So we have some parameters.
With, basically, it's the dealership, whenever it closes. I don't know the hours, whether it's-
That's why, yeah, I think you asked the question, what are your hours of operation going to be?
Let me help you there, John, and see if I can clarify that. If we had a, when this is not the highest volume per repair order, a customer count of one, of any of our stores, it's about half of our largest store. And in that store, you know, a couple days a week, we may run a split shift that runs from 3:00 to 9:00. And that, 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 when I say a shift, that's a prep guy and a painter. So we're not talking about, and this whole shop only employs five people, so it's not like we have 25 people running in and out of there, and a second shift is a lot, you know, a ton of work. But if we have to button up a couple jobs and have somebody run a second shift, we could run from 7:00 till 9:00 PM if, if we were overloaded and this, but I don't believe that's going to be the case in this situation.
But I think if we're going to build parameters into an ordinance, we need to know those hours.
I would, I mean, in all fairness, I'd say 7:00 to 9:00.
Okay.
Okay.
Now, that'd be about what the sales hours.
All right, I have some additional questions, so. Okay, so that's, that's the first question. The, the second question is, this is 100% contained within the dealership, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Question pertaining to your spray booth. Is it a full-wall ventilation system?
The spray booth is a global finishing solution. It's called a performance booth. It's double skin. It's, you know, it's a $55,000 paint booth, there's not a, you know, not a single skin, $6,000.
I understand, but you have- I understand, but you have, you have a ventilation system on the booth.
Absolutely, triple filtration down to 99% particulates.
That's what I was getting to, okay. So, and then, where does that vent? And you're saying that it vents up, it'll vent up above the structure of the building, correct?
The way this booth works, because it's a heated booth and that's what the waterborne paints require, what you have, it's, it's a, it vents out the roof, it has to be by law 10 feet above the roof level, and the only time that there's any exhaust is when you're spraying, because there's a person in there, and so when you're spraying, you've got, if you're painting a bumper, maybe a minute of clear, I'm not talking about the base coats because they don't smell and there's no VOCs in them, they're latex, so, but as far as the clear coat, until they come out with a water-based one, you're maybe spraying for, I don't, half a minute or a minute to put clear on a bumper, and then it goes into a recirculating mode where the heat just sits there and, and recirculates in the self-contained unit. So, it's got its own air makeup system, its own heater, its own recirc, and, and there's very limited time when it actually exhausts.
Yeah, and, and your exhaust system will also have, I'm sure, a stop on it, ventilation stop. In other words, it will only open up when the vents are, you know, the fans are blowing.
Yeah, it has, it has louvers on it and, and they open and they shut automatically and they're, they're basically for rain, they're called rain gutters also, so the rain doesn't go down in there.
So, it's not open to the, you know, so there won't be any regular smells coming out of there? It's only for that one or two minutes that you're spraying?
That's it.
The product, okay. So, that's another point I want to make. The, the other question I have is as far as the square footage of your, your paints, you're typically, what is a typical, you know, fender job or bumper job? How many square foot are you actually painting?
Somewhere nine square feet, something like that would be, that would be an average. And the only reason I use that as an average is because a lot of the mobile paint permits that let people spray outside with solvent-based paints, they limit each repair to a nine-square-foot area. You know, the, we, our key is, is plastic parts and trim pieces in bumpers, we know that, and, but if somebody comes in, they've got a scrape on their bumper and it goes into the fender, we'll do that job. And I don't want to, you know, I'm not trying to tell some, tell people we're not going to do something that we are, so, the, but I, you know, I think, you know, I don't know how, how to, how to limit that. If you had a key scratch that covered your, your two doors on your car, that would be a job we do. It's not a heavy collision, it's not banging around, it's not welding, it's not stud guns and pulling and hammering, these are sanding and painting and, and pretty much quiet repairs. I mean, sure, the sander's the only thing that makes any noise, nothing else makes any noise.
Sanders don't make as much noise as the air gun taken off the wheels of the car.
No way.
You know, I know that, I've, I've been in places that use both and personally speaking, my opinion, they're, they don't have as much of a decibel level as the air gun.
We did have, in this, in the New York situation, they, they put in there that there will be no, no, no painting of entire cars, and I mean, that's, you know.
Which is something, I would suggest, no painting of entire cars, and if it's nine-square-foot, if that's the limit, then maybe we should put that in the ordinance as well and, you know, you abide by that.
Yeah, I don't know what, I haven't, I haven't measured what a, let's say, a door and a quarter panel and a bumper, I don't know what exactly it is, but that's probably, I don't know, six feet by four feet, I don't know what's that.
Okay, all right. I'm, I'm trying to think, there was, there was one other thing I had, sorry, had a brain fade there.
I would say, I would say your nine-square-foot would be light as far as what we do, so.
Oh, yeah, I know. Percentage-wise, you said you do a lot of, you know, you'll do some dentless, which is the pull, the pulls with the suction cups, and you, you also do a lot of trim work.
Right.
Because we're talking about the spray booth.
Uh-huh.
And overall, how much of your business is actually spraying?
That's a great point. In our, in our studies and research and documentation, of every 100 cars that comes in, the penetration level for repairs is, is 8%. So, eight cars out of 100 get some sort of repair, and a repair is either paintless, a bumper, or a wheel. That's the way we kind of, those are the three categories there that we count as a repair, so, two of those, and, and they mix around every day, I mean, but on a given day, you've got two repairs that are paintless dent repair, you've got three, three bumpers that you do and maybe four wheels if that adds up to eight. But that's, and, and I think in this situation, McGrath maybe checks in a little less than that, maybe in the 80, 80 cars a day realm, maybe 80 or 90, so that'd be a little less than that. So, once again, I think, we're not talking about a huge amount of spray time, we're not talking about a huge amount of repairs, when we talk about 8% of the customers that come in there every day and then spread that out over wheels, bumpers, and paintless dent repair.
So, so the, you know, so you're saying 8%, I want to get this clear.
Yeah.
8% of your total volume is spraying?
Eight, no, 8% is, is, that's how many different, that's how many repairs, units I'll call them, if, if, if there's paint, there's bumpers, and there's wheels.
What I'm trying to get is, what percentage of your total overall that you take in, not McGrath, but you as, as a business, a subset of McGrath, is spraying? What percentage of the work that you do is spraying?
You got a guess on that one?
I've been sworn in.
You go ahead, you're, you're, here's the numbers guy.
Okay.
Okay, I have my name down there, I haven't been sworn in. Well, I have been sworn in, when I was here, I was here at the beginning, does that count?
Yes, yes.
Okay, what he's saying is of 100 cars that are coming in through McGrath Lexus in a day, we will touch eight of those. Of those cars, those eight cars, four of them will have paint, two of them will be wheels, two of them will be paint.
What I'm getting at is the four, is that the number? Is it 50% of the eight? What I'm trying to get at is, of the ones that you touch, for, for the, the repair shop, for the, the business that is the, you know, your business, not McGrath's overall business, how much of those, how many of those, what percentage is paint?
I think Lindsay just answered that with the...
Is it four, is it, is it half? Is it 50%?
Inventory cars also, which could be another four.
Okay, so...
Half of it will be paint.
Half, that's what I was getting at, so half of the business is paint. Okay, thank you. I, I think I've asked all my questions.
Commissioner, appeal?
Thank you. Yeah, those were several of my questions also, but somebody I think brought up a point, are there MSDS sheets that are available on these, on these products that you're using?
Absolutely, and they're required by the fire marshal, all those prior to any permitting are required anyway.
And have those been submitted to staff?
It'll be submitted as part of the permit submittal, the permit's middle package.
Prior to the village board meeting?
Ordinarily, an applicant will get village board approval and then make the full permit submittal, just so that they have the benefit of knowing whether there's favor for the project or not, before spending the money on the full package, the middle.
Yeah, Shannon and Greg, they're, you know, the MSDS sheets are, they're required by federal law to be on site too, so.
Right.
We have, we've got the yellow book, MSDS sheets hanging on the wall, it's got every product in there.
Okay. Back to a question that came up earlier in the discussion. So, we've got McGrath Lexus here, and so we've got Mint, but is Mint really an arm of Dent Wizard? How is this, I'm having trouble with the corporate makeup of how this all channels down, which is going to be important, I think, for attorney in the issuing of, of anything that, if anything, is passed.
And I, I kind of thought of that myself, I mean, because you've got a couple arms of it, you've got, you know, you've got the sales arm, which is the McGrath people and their, their service advisors offer Mint Cosmetic Reconditioning Services to their customers, so that's one piece of it. You have McGrath employees that bring us the cars, but typically, the, the Dent Wizard, the Mint employees do the actual work, so, but then again, there could be, there's an instance when a McGrath employee could take some wheels off and bring them over, so it really is a, it's a partnership, we share in, in profitability and expenses and build-out, so, it's a little bit of a, a little tricky, I guess.
Who does McGrath have an agreement with, if such agreement were to exist? Is it with Dent Wizard or with Mint?
It's with Dent Wizard and Mint is, Mint is our branded name of this program.
Okay, so that's your marketing name?
That's correct.
Okay.
And that's Dent Wizard?
International.
International?
And you said that was out of St. Louis?
That's correct.
So, just so you know, the, the special use would apply to Dent Wizard International Inc., or whatever their corporate title is, in conjunction with the operation of McGrath Lexus Auto Dealership. So, if either one of those would disappear, then the special use would disappear if this were to be granted.
Okay, so it would be tied to that, and we've already established the location, is in the furthest point from the housing area of, of the existing McGrath building. And the hours are not to exceed the hours of the dealer.
Well, let's not leave it vague, he said 7:00 to 9:00.
9:00.
Which may be the current hours of the dealer, those could change. What if the dealer stays open until midnight?
Yeah, I don't know what the hours of the dealer are.
I don't either, Tom. The hours of the dealership, but I think, I think once again, I think 7:00 to 9:00 is what, what we would recommend.
Sales is open through 8:00, Monday through Thursday, and closes at 6:00 on Friday and Saturday. However, if someone's there later and wants to purchase a car, we'll certainly stay open to deliver them a car past hours. One of our concerns with Mint from a dealership level was, number one, you know, safety of our employees and our, you know, we're throwing ourselves out there a little bit in that we're bringing more scrutiny on ourselves from the EPA that we've never had before. There's a whole different set of rules between waste oil and, and paint, and, and my owner and our attorney both had to be very, very comfortable with the fact that these people were doing the right job disposing of it through a proper disposal company, I believe you use Safety Clean?
Yeah.
Which is one of the, the local or national safety disposal companies. So, we're very comfortable with how they're going to handle our safety, and also, we're not going to give them a key. I don't know that our insurance would cover our, our cars if one of the Mint employees stole them and we had left them there, that's negligence, I'm certain of that, so, no, they will be not, they will not be there after hours, you know, they may be there after 9:00 if the sales department's open, they're trying to get something done possibly, maybe, but they usually have to get out of there right on time, if you know what I mean, so.
I mean, and, and back to the, you know, a large body shop may generate, when we talk about waste, it may generate 55 gallons worth of waste a month, and we typically have five gallons picked up a quarter. That's a five-gallon jug typically, and it's not full, and, you know, the waterborne paint doesn't, doesn't create any waste at all, that you put some in your, in, in it, you put some, I don't know what they call it, coagulator or something, it turns it into a, into a solid and it can be thrown out with the regular trash, so, and the solvent bases, you know, you, you use it all, you know, you mix enough to paint a bumper and you've got a dab left and, and, and your, your goal is, is especially at $255 a gallon, you don't want to waste any, so we try our best to, to utilize all the materials and not waste any.
Okay, thank you, I don't have any further questions.
Commissioner, Thomas?
Keeping focused on what we're here tonight for, which does not include lights and, and all the other issues, which should be brought, I would imagine, whenever this goes before the trustees, those same concerns should be brought then to your elective officials, and if your concerns are not being, or have not been, answered or addressed in a satisfactory fashion, then that should be brought up then also, and to staff here. I wasn't there when the conversation took place, but I find it hard to, how should I say it, picture staff saying, well, what can we do? I'll, I'll just leave that at that. The, what I'm, the picture that I'm getting here is people getting notified that, that a body shop is moving in next door, and, and the concerns that have come out are from, based on the typical envisioning of a body shop and all the tools and, and everything that goes with it, and I don't believe, through presentation and our packet, that that is the case. And whatever we approve tonight, you will be held to those standards, and so will Lexus, like Lexus is now, and if there, if people are thinking that it's, they're not being upheld, they have a duty to their neighborhood, their, to, to come in and complain to, to staff, and if staff is not addressing them, then it's, I, I would assume that you would need to go to the trustees and, and just, just take it until, so that's, you know, I, I am comfortable with your particular setup, that you're coming to us with tonight. I cannot address what the other concerns with Toyota or, or, or whatever, and, and neither can you or neither can Lexus, but I would take care of the lighting thing, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Yeah, Craig, I, I mean, you know, this isn't a smokescreen to put a body shop in. We don't, we're not in the body shop business, we don't want to operate a body shop, we don't want to compete with body shops. This program, it only works because of the convenience and the revenues that it can generate, it's streamlined.
You want that car out, out of there at the end of that day, correct?
Same day, yeah.
That's the process, right?
So, I mean, regulations and language, I mean, we encourage that, if you want to, if we want to say maximum four panels on any vehicle, or, I mean, New York said, no, no entire vehicles, but if you said maximum four panels on a vehicle and listed the repairs that we do, paintless, interior work, bumper repair, spot painting, trim, you know, all the things that are in our brochure and in the, in the applications, we don't have any problem with that. We're not, we're not trying to start here and end up here. We don't want to be in the body shop, this program is, is not about body shop work.
All right, that's all I have.
I don't know if I'm missing something here. Who does this work now? How's this work get done now?
It's a good question.
Okay, just...
For instance, the wheel repair, there's a truck that pulls up with permits in our parking lot.
I mean, the, the work that they're proposing to do, who does that?
I'm talking about each, each portion of it.
Okay.
They repaint wheels, there's a truck that pulls up, there's a permit to spray those inside of a contained truck, and they do the wheels in there and they go away. The interior repairs are done right on the lot, outside with the doors open, there's a vendor that comes in and does that, and the bulk of our, our bumper repairs will be sent out either to Westmont Body Works, I wonder if anybody hears, Nnedi Pinko, by the way, who owns the place, just kidding, but either to a body shop down the street or, or Collision Craft, which is also in Westmont, I believe.
So, what is the advantage to Westmont? To change the ordinances and grant these variances, what is the advantage to our community to do something other than what's being done right now? I am a Lexus dealer, oh, no, I bought from you guys, I come to you guys, it's great convenience. I would gladly be inconvenienced a day or two to not have something permanently moved in, to handle something that obviously is being handled beautifully, except, I, I'm just trying to get, why, why is this important to Westmont?
Can I, can I tell you why it's important to us? I've been looking for a way to recondition customers' vehicles for a long, long time in a prompt, convenient manner. I've spoke with Westmont Body Works about painting bumpers and things like that. The problem is the turnaround time. If you come into Lexus, you'll probably get a loaner car when you leave your car for any length of time. For me to send the bumper to Westmont Body Works and have you in a loaner car for an additional one or two days, it just doesn't make sense for me to do that. It doesn't make sense for me to do that monetarily. And likewise with the interior... And likewise with the interior repair, the gentleman's around one day a week. So if you'd like your interior repaired, you have to come by on Wednesday.
I'm okay with that.
A lot of people aren't. A lot of people are busy and...
But they don't live in our neighborhood.
I understand, I'm just answering your question.
Yes, I appreciate that, I really do. But I guess, it's just a little confusing to me, like, what's the bottom line of why this has to be done?
From what I'm gathering, they want to be able to turn over a vehicle the same day it's brought in.
Okay.
Which they are not able to do now. Plain and simple.
Okay, so, so that's more important than the concerns of the residences, is what I'm taking away, bottom line?
It's important to them.
Yeah, and what's important to us?
This will be the last...
Okay, so, I'm an accountant, so basically, the economic impact to Westmont, it's a wash. Instead of getting done 1,000 feet away, it's getting done in-house, so it's to their advantage. And the economic forecast, 750,000, that has nothing to do with generally accepted accounting principles. I can make it look like 1.5 million, I can make it look like 500,000. The bottom line is, this is a total wash for Westmont. Why is it even being acknowledged?
Well, the village doesn't make decisions based on the econo, solely based on the economic impact or benefit to the village. It's based on whether the proposed use meets the standards set up in the zoning ordinance. So that's what this commission has to consider.
But anybody can bring something forward, I mean, it's...
I thought it was a big economic impact, but it's really not, just, instead of Westmont Body Works, these guys do it.
I'm not sure where you got that, and as an accountant, I'm even more stunned that you would say that. I don't think anybody said that.
It's solely not at Westmont.
Everybody has a right to come in and give us the village, their application fee, and present.
I thought it was a big economic impact.
No.
Thanks for your gamblers.
And to answer your question, it will generate extra revenue, if that's important, fine, if it's not, that's fine, it's gonna generate...
Not to Westmont, to you.
Oh, sure.
Okay.
That's why I'm here.
As long as we're clear. It's, you know, we don't care about who it is for Westmont, or the general policy, it's not good to the homeowners, but...
You've had your chance, please. It's my turn. Everybody else got to speak, now it's my turn.
Okay.
Okay, first off, on your booth, I'm seeing you have, it looks like two, three exhaust fans, one in your mix room, one in your paint booth, and one where you do your sanding. Will those all penetrate the roof?
Yes.
And then your intake for the paint booth, that will also penetrate the roof?
Correct.
So you're gonna have four roof penetrations?
That's correct.
On your paint booth, do you use the equivalent of HEPA filters where your particulate matter is in the 99...
99, that's correct, yeah.
You also use, or have you thought of using activated carbon filters for odor?
We've looked at, but only in the situations where we can't get through a roof, we're in the basement of a concrete building, water and charcoal don't work as good, and they seem to be very expensive to operate, not as efficient as what we use. This is, the booth we use is as high-end and as compliant as it can possibly be.
Well, let me understand one thing. When you're spray painting, you're using water and latex. When you're clear coating, you're using the VOC. And that, when you're spraying the clear coat, the activated carbon could conceivably help?
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, it's a thought. Okay, we've discussed hours of operation. I can't, storage of vehicles, vehicles will be not stored on-site, they're gonna be gone that day, if they were brought in, they're gonna be out that night.
That's correct, yeah. I mean, inventory vehicles, they're already stored on-site.
I understand, yeah.
But customer cars, I mean, the goal is, if a customer, I'll rephrase that, if a customer has a key scratch on their door and their fender, I mean, that may be a day and a half, two-day job, but I mean, these are not week-long, lengthy processes. The goal is to get everything out same day. It's really, we sell the smaller repairs, the customer demands a little bit more, so we typically end up getting pushed a little further into maybe a two or three panel. A kid runs down the side with his bicycle and scratches down the side of the car, that's the magnets, that's the maximum situation that we want to ever find ourselves in, because what it does, if we take a big job, it lets, it doesn't let us do five little jobs, and make five people happy, and probably generate more revenue by doing the five jobs. Plus, it log jams the used cars, and the dealership wants to turn their inventory, they want their used cars recycled quickly through the reconditioning process. So, you know, our goal is to keep as small as possible.
But conceivably, you could go into a two-day job, where who would handle the loaner car for this?
Lexus would.
Lexus?
Yeah, well, depending on, you know, I mean, Lexus has their own guidelines, if it's under warranty, they may, they give out a loaner, sometimes they don't give out a loaner, sometimes they use rental cars, so, and sometimes they just say, "Hey, you have to take the shuttle home, if you're nearby, because it's gonna be two days." So there's a wide variety of how the loaner car situation works.
How are you gonna handle it?
How, we leave that to the dealership.
I'm sorry?
We leave that up to the dealership, how the customer, really, the customer end and the sales end of it is completely up to McGrath.
If Lexus, now, were you over on Pasqualini Drive, would it be an inconvenience to put this facility over on Pasqualini Drive?
Actually, from a space standpoint, it would be ideal. The problem is, when he's going to repaint a bumper, again, we're shooting for the one day turnaround. When he's going to repaint a bumper for us, or work on some wheels, we'll check the car in the morning, we'll bring it over to the dent, or the Mint area, they'll take the wheels off, put some loaner wheels, and take the bumpers off. We can't drive a car down Ogden Avenue without any bumpers on it, it's just not safe, it's not allowed, and I'm sure we would get plenty of tickets for even trying to do something like that. So it just doesn't, it doesn't fit into the business model at all. So, in our opinion, we're going to use Mint in our existing facility. The only reason we have room in the existing facility is because we built, we added on in 2007, 2008, right before the economy went down, and we were ramping up for future business. Now, we're gonna have a four-year agreement with Mint, and that is cancelable at that time, or anywhere near that time, if it doesn't work, free the party. My goal, as a service manager, the bays are much more profitable as mechanical bays than they are having a paint booth in them, for me. I would rather have technicians and lifts in those bays, if at all possible. This is a revenue stream that we feel is proven, just by their dealings with other dealers that we know, and trust their opinion. Again, we trust their ability to cover us in issues with the EPA, and the paint booth, and they're investing, I don't know what the number is, but probably $150,000 in this venture themselves. So, nobody's going into it lightly, it's not a haphazard, we'd like to do this, what do you think? It's well thought out and well planned out, and proven in other areas of the country.
So then, essentially, though, when these cars are gonna go to Mint, these are automobiles that you're gonna do some mechanical work on, primarily, and then this is gonna be offered to the car owner as a side job, if you would?
That's true. When you come in for a service, we'll do a walk-around in your car, and find some scuffs on the bumper, show you prices to repair those, see if you'd like to do it now while it's in today, or not, and that would be our sales process.
Okay, I understand. One thing I wanted to make sure of, who is gonna pay, who's gonna write the paycheck for the Mint employees? Is that Dent International?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, that's good. You've answered my question, you're in California. Okay, just to talk to, shoot amongst ourselves here, maybe we should also come up with a recommendation that there be, if you want, how many panels, maximum, they would be able to work on? Two, three panels on a car? Whether it could be a hood, a trunk, or a fender, or a bumper?
And your thought behind that is, what? To get away from what happening? A full car repair?
Full car repair. If you so, if you thought it was a good idea, I'm just tossing ideas out.
I've been writing down conditions, special conditions to put in the ordinance, based on whether you guys want to recommend those or not.
Yeah, let's hear it.
Well, one of those is, you know, no full body work and no full body painting. If you want to limit it further by either square feet, or, you know, it's a little tough, because I know they want to operate a business, but certainly you can recommend something that would be like, so many panels plus a bumper, or so many square feet.
You don't want it too ambiguous, though, at the same time.
I think full, full body paint goes against the nature of your business. Like, you're doing one customer as opposed to the five that you mentioned before.
We, I say others, but this way...
You wouldn't suggest the full, that work to the customer?
Might be easier to say, in the longest-running, highest-profitable...
If you would, please, at the podium, so the home audience can hear you.
Sorry about that. In the number one, and actually the initial Lexus store that has the Mint program in it, going on somewhere four and a half, almost five years, we've never painted an entire car. So, I'm not sure if that helps any, but we're not in the business of doing complete repaints. We have painted the side of a car. How often does that happen? You know, I'd be stretching it if I said once a month, but I'm just, you know, I use that as a figure.
That's immaterial.
Okay.
Okay, my prime concern, let me tell you how I'm thinking, folks, on this. One, this is completely encased within the building. It's got nothing to do with parking lots, lights, unfortunately, we can't do anything about it, that's already been discussed, installed. You can perhaps talk to the Board of Trustees when the gentleman comes up to address those, but we cannot do anything about that. But my thinking is this, that this is completely contained within the building. I would think that probably seven months out of the year, all service doors are gonna be closed. If you could help me along these lines?
Probably more than that. Our service department also has air conditioning, so we keep it closed unless it's ideal conditions.
So you're talking at least 10 months a year, probably?
Probably.
These doors are gonna be completely closed, I would think that you're not gonna hear anything. The whine of a power tool, a sander, or something like that, the impact of a, an air-impact gun removing a wheel, it's, I don't think that would be too bad. As per the mitigation of the odors, I don't think, when we see the VOCs from the clear coat, that's gonna be such a brief spraying, that I don't think it's gonna be too much of a problem. I myself, I don't see too many problems with this. Anybody else feel like any comments? Okay, since we have a request for special uses, and we will have a reading of the findings of the fact first for a special use.
Criteria number one, that the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the special use will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare. All operations will be conducted indoors. The applicant will primarily use water-based paints with adequate ventilation. No major body work will occur on the premises. As such, the proposed use will not endanger the public welfare. Criteria number two, that the special use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity, for the purposes already permitted, nor substantially diminish or impair property values within the neighborhood. The work will take place within an existing auto dealer which has an existing vehicle service area. Their proposed operations will not result in adverse noise, light, odor, or vibration, and will not adversely impact surrounding properties. Criteria number three, that the establishment of the special use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding property for uses permitted in the district. Surrounding properties are fully developed in this proposed use, within an existing auto dealer will not impede surrounding development. Criteria number four, that adequate utilities, accessways, drainage, and any other necessary facilities have been or are being provided. The property is currently serviced by adequate utilities, accessways, drainage, and other necessary facilities. Criteria number five, that adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide ingress and egress so designed as to minimize traffic congestion in the public streets. Their proposed use will not add traffic to the public streets, or cause any traffic or parking concern. Criteria number six, that the special use in all other respects conforms to the applicable regulations of the district in which it's located, except as such regulations may, in each instance, be modified by the Village Board pursuant to the recommendation of the Plan Commission. The proposed use meets all of the requirements of the village's zoning ordinance and other codes and ordinances, except for its proximity to residential property, and the applicant is seeking a variance from that distance requirement. Criteria number seven, the proposed use meets the special conditions of special condition numbers four and seven. Although the proposed use does not technically comply with the 500-foot separation requirement from a residence district, the use will take place in an existing building with a 147-foot setback from a residence district. All operations will be conducted indoors, and there is not expected to be any adverse impact on the adjacent residential properties. There is existing landscaping screening along the north property line which screens the residential development to the north. Vehicles will be serviced and stored indoors, and there will be no outdoor parking of vehicles awaiting service or pickup.
If you agree with these findings of fact, please raise your hand. We are unanimous in agreement. The findings of fact for a special use are hereby adopted and approved. Under Planning and Zoning Item 13028, I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees. Item A, a special use permit request to operate an existing automobile dealership in the B2 general business district with a cosmetic repair center that includes painting and body and fender work. So moved?
Seconded.
That is Commissioner Thomas, motion by Commissioner Thomas, seconded by Commissioner Pill. A question on the motion.
Is this where we would add those caveats, or is that going to be done later?
Separate motion.
Separate motion.
That could be a separate motion. I would have a question also, John, that since Sunday is a car dealership is closed, there would be no way that anything could be done on a Sunday whatsoever?
We don't have any shops that are open on Sundays.
Any further questions? Rule call, please.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Fidesco votes yes. Comis, uh, trust, Chairman Richard?
Okay, we have a, asking for a variance, we need reading of the findings of fact for a variance?
Criteria number one, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in the district in which it's located. The proposed operations will take place in an existing auto dealership building which contains a setback of 147 feet from the residence district. The applicant will not encroach further from what exists. The applicant could not operate its business without this variance. Criteria number two, the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. All operation will be conducted indoors in an existing auto dealership building. The applicant will use water-based paints and will perform no major body repairs on site. Criteria number three, the variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. The applicant currently operates an automobile dealership from this location with associated vehicle repairs and servicing. This new use will simply broaden the scope of their vehicle service, without any associated harmful impact on surrounding properties.
If you agree with these findings, please raise your hand. We are unanimous in agreement.
John, question on the...
John, question on the findings of fact. Criteria number two, the finding is the applicant will use water-based paints and will perform no major body repairs on site. This is part of the findings, so it is part of the ordinance, and it cannot be violated, correct?
Uh, no. The findings are the findings, and the ordinance is a separate document.
Okay.
So we're going to get to that when we address the special conditions.
We have to address that, sir. Okay, we have an approval of the findings of fact for a variance. Planning and zoning item 13028, item B. I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees. The zoning code variance request to permit a cosmetic repair center that includes painting and body and fender work within 500 feet of a residence district. So move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Thomas, seconded by Commissioner Fidesco. Question on the motion. Rule call, please.
Commissioner Fidesco votes yes. Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Chairman Richard?
Yes.
Do you want me to read?
Please, yes. Would you, John?
Okay. So I can make a suggested motion and add on to it as, or change it as you guys feel fit. It would be a, a motion to recommend the following special conditions on this special use approval. One, the special use would apply to Dent Wizard International in conjunction with the operation of McGrath Lexus dealership and would not run with the property. Two, all operations shall comply with applicable IEP-A emission standards. Three, no bodywork or full body painting shall take place in conjunction with this operation. Only touch-up painting and minor bodywork is allowed as per the presentation. Number, I think we're on four. The applicant shall use water-based latex paint only in conjunction with the clear coat and base finish. Five, the hours of operation shall be 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM, Monday through Saturday. Six, the location of the operations within the building shall be as what was submitted on the plans in conjunction with their request. Seven, although this wasn't discussed, the applicant shall dispose of all hazardous materials per IEP-A regulations. And then six, the ordinance should include a dispute resolution procedure, and if that fails, a hearing process with due, due process to the applicant with the potential to revoke the special use in the event of a violation of the special conditions.
Would anybody care to make a motion? So move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Thomas, seconded by Commissioner Pill. Question on the motion?
Yes. So, as far as those hours are concerned, I seem to have heard shorter hours from the gentleman who's the parts manager. I thought, did you say you close at six on Friday nights?
I'll change that to six on Friday and Saturday.
And eight, Monday through Thursday?
Hmm.
But he says sometimes they run till nine, so my thought was
Okay, that's fine.
Give them a little leeway
Yeah, that's fine.
To wrap up stuff.
Then you need to go to seven on Friday and Saturday, I don't know.
Yeah, probably to be safe. I mean, what you don't want is a technical violation where it's 6:15 and they're wrapping things up and
Right.
And all of a sudden, the neighbors are screaming, and rightfully so, if that's what the ordinance says.
Any further questions?
I just have one comment with the, the placement of the, the units, that there should not be any ability to move anything inside once they're
That's why it's restricted to the area depicted on their plans that they presented to us.
So they, they have no possibility of moving those?
Not without coming back and having a new public hearing on that issue.
Did the hours take care of the no Sundays?
Yes.
I have no further questions.
Okay. Maybe we have a rule call on the
Motion.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Fidesco votes yes. Chairman Richard?
Yes.
Okay, you have our recommendation for approval, and staff can tell you when you go before the Village Board. I would suggest to you folks that, I've heard a lot of talk about light intrusion into your homes. I know we have Arbor Vitas that are fairly tall, where are they, back by the, they along the Toyota, is it, or something?
Yeah, I believe it's
They're on the other side.
By Westmont Auto.
They're west, by Westmont Auto. But Westmont Auto, they have
Okay, maybe something between the homeowners and the dealership could be done to, maybe some install of some Arbor Vitas in there to give you folks a little bit of relief along this. It might be something you could talk about with the dealership, maybe when you meet with the trustees. I hope you go to the trustees' meeting.
When is, when is staff meeting?
Staff can tell you.
It will likely be on October 31st, but you can confirm that with me. Jill Ziegler. My direct line is 630-981-6267.
To the attorney, would it be in our best interest to bring our corporate attorneys there?
You can do whatever you like.
Okay. What do they do with this meeting? Go at it the same way?
Yeah, basically, the, the board will hear a presentation from the applicant, if the applicant's available, or from McGrath Lexus, that will mirror this presentation or might be a condensed version, since the board typically watches this or watches it on replay. The public will have an opportunity to comment, and then they'll vote up or down in ordinance for the special use and the variance.
Keep in mind, we're a recommending body, so they can choose to vote yes or no, depending, and either way, we recommend, it doesn't make any difference.
Are they elected officials?
They are elected officials. We are appointed.
Thank you.
I, I will point out, I, I know people said, rightfully so, if you have concerns about the lights, et cetera, with this dealership or another dealership, you know, go to the Village Board, talk to staff about it. It's probably not germane to the special use discussion that the Village Board will be hosting for this request, so you're certainly free to raise it, but it might be more appropriate to come in under open forum on a special meeting and say, hey, we have problems with the lights, can you, can we have a meeting with McGrath Lexus, or can we have a meeting with Toyota to consider the lights?
Or do you have an issue with the border, you know?
Yes.
Anything. Could there be something like fence, border, something that? I didn't mean to be a smart guy before, I just, I was just trying to prove a point and say, if anybody wanted to walk with me on the property, you'd say, well, this guy's not lying. That's all I meant when I said earlier about the problems that we have with the dealerships. You know, that's all I meant.
Okay.
Excuse me, I just wanted to say, yes, I was there before Lexus too, and I woke up one morning and that big light skater was right outside my bedroom window, and when I complained, the whole layout had been approved by the village of Westmont. So, you know, it was everything had been approved according to the plans, and when I woke up, the light was there, and so then, you know, they're not to take the light out for me.
Okay. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, planning is, planning and zoning item 13029. Mark Iozzo of Ogden Lincoln regarding the property located at 209 East Ogden Avenue, Westmont. Why don't you give it to Jill?
Give it to Jill, and then it'll be fine. Thank you.
Item A, a special use permit request to operate an automobile dealership in the B2 general business district. Item B, special use permit request to allow the sale of used automobiles in the B2 general business district. Item C, zoning code variance request to permit the sale of used automobiles within 500 feet of a residence district. Item D, zoning code variance request to permit parking and the required front yard setback. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. I have not been sworn in. Sorry.
Sit down. I swear, any testimony I give this evening shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
I do.
Thank you. Sorry to keep you so late.
Another car dealer.
Another car dealer. My name is Mark Iozzo from Ogden Lincoln, and I am here requesting two special use permits and two zoning code variances for the property located at 209 East Ogden Avenue. I wish to sell new and used automobiles there, if I can, should I read this? Do you have this in front of you? I'm assuming you do. Operate an automobile dealership in B2 general business district, special use permit for that, as well as one for allow the sale of used automobiles in the B2 general business district, and a zoning code variance requesting permission of the sale of used automobiles within 500 feet of a resident district, and a zoning code variance requesting parking and the required front yard setback of the property.
Okay, would you address the hardships imposed?
Well, the hardships imposed are that, I'm an owner in the property, and the property's basically a single-use property, it was built as a car dealership, I built it in 2007, and through the course of the recession, the Lamborghini dealership that we had in there is gone, and I'm just trying to use the property to, to make ends meet.
So pretty much what you're saying, sir, is to try any other use with this building, which is already established, it'd be almost impossible. It's only used for
This building, yeah, this car dealership specifically is probably harder than any other because it's, it's on a relatively small piece of property. If you've been in the building, it has two-story building, so we have a car elevator in there. It's, it's pretty specific to a car dealership.
Well, let's see. Let's open this for public comment. Seeing nobody raising their hand, we're going to close public comment. Staff?
Um, I apologize because I missed the beginning portion.
I didn't mean to catch you so
No, that's okay. Did we go over the proposed timeline for the change? Okay. Then I would recommend that the applicant go over the timeline for used versus new and how that will work.
Would you address that?
Absolutely. So, currently also own piece of property, 100 West Ogden, which is just west of Cass. That property has been in my family for almost 50 years, and it will be going through a major renovation at the bequest of the Ford Motor Company to become a remodeled Lincoln dealership. So I have some smaller handouts for all of you that will show the proposed elevation, front elevation. May I pass them out?
Please. If you could pull one on the screen also for the home audience?
I'm not sure if it fits.
Oh, okay.
Well, you know, hopefully it'll fit, and if it doesn't, they, they will move the camera up to try to fit it in.
Yeah, it's not going to fit. No, it's just Is this still up, I'm assuming? I don't know. I guess it's pretty good, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, basically, the, the lower portion right here is the current elevation, and you can see the height is 15.3 inches, 15 feet, three inches. And what you can't see here is that there's a setback. This portion over here, further to the west, is setback approximately 12 feet from the upper, or we call the upper showroom here. This proposal will be one, from here, all the way over will be one flush wall, and then this proposed service area is setback about, I believe it's about 50 feet from the front. This is, this would be an addition. This is just for your, I guess to get the conversation started in terms of this is, we're proposing, and obviously it's a major renovation, it's a, it's about
Mr. Wright?
Sorry?
If I may interrupt, what you've handed us is for 100 West Ogden.
Correct, 100. So that, I, I know, it's a long way to get to the point of what I'm about to say is, so this is, it's about a 17,000 square foot building currently. There's about a 4,000 square foot, there will be a 4,000 square foot proposed addition, which will lead us to be totally under construction, hopefully around the first of February. So around the first of February, we'll be moving, we'd like to, like to move the entire operation but for the service department into 209 East Ogden. So my proposal, my request is to sell certified pre-owned Lincolns out of 209 East Ogden until approximately February 1st, and then, well, we'd also move new cars down there as well, and just continue to service out of the 100 West.
So in essence, you're not really going to remodel 209?
Not at all. No, I mean, it's
Okay. You're just going to move into an existing
This is just a point of information to kind of show you why we're
Okay. You threw me there for a second.
Moving into 209 East Ogden.
I don't get
You threw me there for a second. Yeah, sorry.
Based on how you read this, it seems like the one you just had up there is going to be the bigger and the newer one then, when it's all done, but that's going to be where used cars are then?
No, no, this, when we get done, everything will be here. Everything will be here at 100 West Ogden. And 209, I mean, 209 is, there's a lot of things that could happen. I mean, I'm working on trying to get a franchise to come into Westmont, as you probably are aware, there's not a whole lot available. You know, there's, there's, if you're familiar with Tesla at all, that's a strictly a manufacturer to
Okay, so you're moving back then?
Yes. This is only a temporary situation.
I never said that in here. I didn't get that.
Okay. That's what I'm getting, this to be a temporary occupancy while 100 West is being rebuilt.
This will be a temporary occupancy while 100 West is being built, correct?
Okay. So then what happens once it's built?
Then it will, well, it will revert to a used car operation, much like we have, you know, have, I mean, you know, as you're, as a Lamborghini, which I have experience at, it's, you know, basically a glorified used car lot anyway. You don't, you know, in theory, you stock two new Lamborghinis and the rest is all used cars anyway, so.
So, just so I can draft an ordinance, so I'm clear. Initially, it's going to be a mixture of new cars and used cars while you do the construction, the remodeling.
Initially, will just be used cars.
Initially, okay, just
Yeah, certified pre-owned.
Till construction starts.
Till construction starts.
Then it becomes both.
Okay.
Then construction ends, and it becomes just used cars again.
Right.
So it's basically a used automobile dealership, long-term.
I mean, you know, it's hard to, having been what I've been through in the last five years of my professional career, it's, it's almost impossible to, you know, imagine what can happen, but, I mean, I'd love to sit here and say that, you know, Lincoln will make a, Lincoln will come back to where it once was, and that we need the extra space for Lincoln, and that we, you know, it'd be great to be able to sell new Lincolns out of this building, it's a spectacular, 209 I'm talking about, spectacular building, but, you know, reality is, if we can't afford to do it, we're just, we're not going to do it. And we have to be able to survive, and this, this remodel at 100 will give us the ability to survive, you know, in a lot of circumstances. I'm not going to say any, but it'll jinx myself. But, and then, you know, that puts the, the onus on me to find something to do with 209 East Ogden between now and, you know, about six months of construction probably, so sometime around this time next year.
So the construction plans, I'm, I'm trying to see what, we've got a service, the construction plans that were in the packet, are those for this building?
The, the
209 building?
The construction plans I just gave you are for this building, yes. I just wanted to, you know, this will be coming
The construction plans that were included in the packet were for Lamborghini.
Hold on.
The construction plans that were in the staff report packet were from Lamborghini because he's not changing the building.
Oh, okay, so that's what's existing.
Right, the building is, I mean, that building is, it's only six years old.
And then the parking of vehicles outside, your, the inventory is going to be listed to the marked parking spaces plus the display in the front yard, correct?
That's the proposal, and there's, there's additional land in back of this piece of paper, just not shown, but there's, there's, you know, there are four more lots behind, four more house lots that we bought in Torrid Island, behind to the north.
So, I guess here's my, the, why is this cut off then? Is that, that's, oh, that's what existed for Lamborghini?
Right.
So sometimes what the Village Board has requested, and certainly what I would recommend, although everyone's free to ignore that, is a site plan showing the entire property and where cars are going to be stored on the property, because, you know, there could be a concern that, especially with the used car dealership, you cram as many cars as you can back there aesthetically, it you can back there aesthetically. It doesn't look like a nice car dealership like we have in Ogden Avenue. It looks like cram as many cars as you can back there, it becomes junky-looking.
Well, you have, I mean, this is, this is the site plan for Ogden, for the 100 building, this piece that I gave you. You have the plan for 209.
Right.
The one that, there's-
Oh, I'm sorry. I can't see.
It was just handed out as 100.
Right. That is, right, that is, I'm sorry, that is 209.
So I'm just talking about 209. Is there the lots behind, the residential lots that were bought? Are you talking about 209?
No, no, sorry.
Okay.
Sorry.
I got it.
Yeah. So, I mean, this thing, the Lamborghini, the old Lamborghini property, 209, it has marked our parking spaces that, you know, are there. I mean, the only thing that we've ever done is to, these ones that are on the south property right here, is to sometimes double stack those. But other than that, that's it. Never been, you know, the building holds 40 cars inside, including the upper level. So it's, I mean, it's got ample space.
Okay.
Is eight appear to be too many out front, or is there, if we had previous ordinances on that before with other requests?
What did we get for the Lamborghini?
I believe it was eight. That's why we asked for eight, but-
I'm pretty sure it was eight.
Yeah. If it, I mean, if it wasn't eight, we'd, I'd certainly be willing to stipulate to whatever it was. That's, if that works for you guys.
The original approval was for four, and then it was increased to a maximum of 10. And then I looked at aerial images, which showed that there were seven cars placed on the pavers.
Yeah, it's not-
A lot of numbers.
I don't know that we need to enumerate special conditions for an auto dealership. I don't have them all in front of me, but there's some standard ones that have been required of all auto dealerships, such as the, you know, balloons, streamers, blow-up Godzillas, things like that. There's certain aesthetic concerns the village has. No display of vehicles on the racks, the elevated racks out front.
Right.
Yeah. This is a small property, probably won't need loudspeakers. Get ahold of your salespeople, but that's always something that's, that's a special condition. And I can certainly get to you guys the, in advance, the ordinance with those special conditions so you can see.
Yeah, I'm pretty familiar with that. We've done away, we've done away with all the racks and the Godzillas in front, so.
Yeah, whatever was in the Lamborghini one, we're going to mirror those.
Right.
Plus, I'm going to say parking's restricted to those marked spaces as shown on the Lamborghini site plan, with the exception that you can double stack along the rear lot line.
Perfect.
Unless the board or this commission says otherwise.
Okay.
I think that's fine.
John-
Why don't we start with the, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I apologize. Historically, we've discussed with Mark that the board has not generally approved used car dealerships as standalone, and I understand that's different for the immediate future duty or phasing plan. There was one specific used dealership that has recently closed, but I believe when that special use was considered, there may have been additional parameters that were put in as conditions for their operations, that it may be worth exploring.
Yeah, it's a good idea. Those are the Alpha Motors.
Yeah.
And I know it's, it also includes things like, you know, the year numbers, the stickers on the car sometimes. You know, there are just certain sales and promotional tactics that you see sometimes with the used dealerships, because they don't have a corporate policy to answer to.
Right. And Lincoln definitely does, so.
But this isn't going to be Lincoln?
Right. And what I want to, I mean, what I'd love to see happen is that, you know, the Lincoln business continues to grow like it's been growing, you know, with some steady consistency over the last 12 months, 18 months, and that, you know, that really becomes our certified pre-owned center, because Lincoln has, finally has a program after many years that has some teeth to it, that's competitive with Lexus, Mercedes, BMW. So, you know, with special financing rates and 100,000 mile warranties. So, we know where our certified pre-owned sales are, you know, up by the hundreds of percent versus what they were three years ago, just because Lincoln is behind the program. So, with the strength of Ford Motor Company, and they continue to back the program, it'd be wonderful for us to be able to justify making that a certified pre-owned center. And that really is, you know, in the back of my mind, that's my goal, you know, but again, I'm not going to, I don't want to take the same risks that I took, you know, in 2007 and wound up where I, you know, what happened with Chevrolet, which was not really my fault, but I can't control the bankruptcy courts. But I want to be very conservative, but I'd love to be able to sell, make that a certified pre-owned center. And that would be, you know, would have the highest standards, would have, you know, there's, Lincoln has tough standards, like all the other luxury brands do. So, that would be great, if we could make that a certified pre-owned center. That'd be, that would be a wonderful achievement.
Good. Why don't we start with the commissioners, let's start with Commissioner Thomas, if you will.
I don't have a problem with what you're doing there. When Lamborghini was there, they came here for signage thing and variance, and since it's been 90 days or whatever of non-occupancy, that all dies, right? And you were just saying about what Lamborghini had and blah. Their signage, probably not going to really care because you have-
The new signage has to comply with the sign ordinance unless he wants to come in for variance, and variance is granted.
It goes back to the basic signage, and then if he wants anything above that, it's repeat. So we wait and see how business goes, and if he wants to come back for signage.
Yeah, we'd just, we'd probably just put something that said Ogden Lincoln on it, and, you know, we'll see, like I said, we'll see what happens.
Normal.
Right.
Okay. That's all I got.
Commissioner Pill.
I was unclear on the sequence, but I understand now.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's working now.
I, I just wanted to explain, you know, how we're, chronology, what we're trying to do, and I maybe got ahead of myself, sorry.
I got it now. So I don't have any questions on this either.
Commissioner Fedesco.
I'm assuming that all the Lamborghini and Lotus signs are gone.
Yeah, unfortunately, you'd be assuming incorrectly. The Lotus sign is still up, and I'm just sort of, you know, getting in there.
They will be gone shortly when you get-
They will be gone, yes, correct.
When you get the Lincoln.
They will be gone. I'm trying to time it so it's coterminous with a new sign. I figure that might save myself some money by having them put the new one up when they take the Lotus sign down.
Okay. Well, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, and-
Lamborghini sign is gone, though.
Okay. I'm sorry to see both that deal went south, but-
Yeah, well, I'm sorry as well.
Okay. As far as the permanent used dealership, you know, your target is going to be selling primarily used Lincolns, but you will have some other higher-end vehicles as well?
Yes. I mean, you know, I know that there is some pushback, not only in Westmont, but other surrounding towns, for used car dealerships. And I totally understand that, you know, not to stereotype Western Avenue, but we're not going to, it's not going to be a Western Avenue, southwestern Avenue dealership. I mean, that's not, that's not our business model. I mean, we have always had a flair and specialized in luxury and exotic cars. If you've driven by, you've, you know, we have, we have some cars stored inside just to keep them from out of the elements. And, you know, our average car, our average transaction is $30,000 on a, on a non-Lincoln certified car. So, there won't be any, you know, every once in a while, we'll take in a, you know, a less expensive car that's great for someone who maybe is just turning 16, or whatever, whatever reason it might be. If it's a really nice car, we'll hang onto it. But we vet every car, and if there's any, you know, if we catch any inclination that it's going to be a problem for someone down the road, we feel like we can't put a warranty on it, we take it right to the auction. And that's not going to change.
Sure, your primary goal is going to be high-end used vehicles outside of the Lincoln brand?
Correct, yes.
Okay. All right. Well, I don't have any questions, and I wish you the best of luck in the transition and everything, and, you know, going forward.
Thank you.
Shannon, on the double stacking of the vehicles at the back end, to allow that, is that going to, what's that going to do for fire department, ingress and egress?
That is a good question, Chairman Richard. We have not explored that with the fire department, assuming that they were just going to use the striped parking spaces. But we could certainly check with them between the time of this meeting and when this goes before the Village Board.
Okay. Anyway, that's, none of that is purview of this board, what we're going to recommend now, anyway. John? Since we're dubious about the use of a, this building for a used car, mainly a used car, no new cars, in the end, once all the transition is done and 100 West is completed, could we put a time limit on a special use for used cars in this building?
So normally, you put a sunset on a use, either by its nature, which is shorter term, or which you know is going to have some adverse impacts, and you're trying to minimize the time that those adverse impacts will occur? In this case, I don't know that there's real justification for a sunset clause like that.
The Village Board's going to be well aware of our concerns, and they also will probably have their own.
I'm sure the Village Board would love to see a used, I mean, a new car dealership here as they want-
So would I.
All along Ogden. But, you know, the fact is, he has a right to ask for a used dealership because our code allows it as a special use. And unless there's a unique adverse impact at this location compared to any other location in the B2 district, be hard-pressed to deny it, unless he was trying to cram cars in there or demanding the right to have ostentatious displays or something like that.
I see, okay.
I really, if I may say something, you know, I think anybody would love to see a new car franchise come in, but if you, you know, if you know the laws and the geographic layout, there's just, there's nothing to bring in. I mean, you'd have to, you know, you'd have to find someone in Downers Grove that you could move in without infringing upon somebody, say, in Willbrook or LaGrange. And it just, I mean, I, believe me, I've, I've spent some time trying to figure that out with some property that I have in Westmont. You know, the only, I mean, I'd love the, you know, obviously Tesla's catching a lot of wind in their sails right now.
I understand Tesla's being sold on the internet, not-
They're going to showrooms and not actually-
Yeah. And there's a lot, there's a lot, if you, if you, there's a lot of pushback about how they're doing that, and they're getting around state laws. Illinois, like for instance, technically, it's against law in Illinois, but they're getting around it because it's being sold over the internet. Now, no one's really pushed them because there are very, it's a very small segment. They're selling about, you know, 10,000 cars a year, which is not a, not a huge number. But, you know, Illinois state law states that you can't, a manufacturer cannot operate a retail space for more than 18 months within the state. Some states, California, for a manufacturer, can't have that in California. But Illinois, it's against law. So, you know, it's going to be interesting to see what happens with Tesla, if they actually get some pushback. My guess is, right now, they won't, because A, they're a very green car, being 100% electric, and B, it's a very small segment. But at some point, they may say, you know, you know, they may not want to hear this or believe it, but there's no question they'd be selling more cars if they had a dealer network. You know, I don't think there's any doubt about that in anyone's mind, except for maybe, I can't think of his name right now.
Elon.
Elon Musk, right. So, you know, maybe. And I, believe me, I think about it a lot, trying to, trying to bring something into Westmont, because I've got the property, so I will not stop trying to do that.
Okay. Any further comments, questions? Okay, we have two special uses, and they will be covered by one reading of findings of fact. If we could have that, please?
Criteria number one, that the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the special use will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare. The property is located along a commercial corridor with many other automobile dealerships. This proposed dealership will not adversely impact the public welfare. Criteria number two, that the special use will not be interest to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity if the purpose is already permitted, nor substantially diminish or repair property values within the neighborhood. The property is located along a busy commercial corridor. A previous automobile dealership operated from this location without any known adverse impacts. The proposed use will not generate adverse noise, light, odor, or vibration, or otherwise impact surrounding properties. Criteria number three, the establishment of the special use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding property for use as permitted in the district. Surrounding properties are fully developed, and the applicant will use the existing building and parking on the property. Criteria number four, the adequate utilities, accessways, drainage, and/or other necessary facilities have been or are being provided. The property is currently served by adequate utilities, accessways, drainage, and other facilities. Criteria number five, that adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide ingress and egress so designed as to minimize traffic congestion in the public streets. The property contains sufficient ingress and egress points and sufficient parking on-site, and will not generate significant traffic volumes in comparison to other existing businesses in the area. Criteria number six, that the special use shall, in all other respects, conform to the applicable regulations of the district in which it's located, except as such regulations may in each instance be modified by the Village Board pursuant to the recommendation of the Plan Commission. The use and existing building and improvements conform to all ordinances and regulations, except for the required separation from a residence district for which a variance is being sought. Criteria number seven, the proposed use meets the special conditions of special condition two, four, and seven. The proposed auto dealership will not generate appreciable traffic or hazard to pedestrian safety. A proposed, a previous dealership existed at this location without issue, and the property contains adequate means of ingress and egress and off-street parking. Although the proposed use is not separated by at least 500 feet to the nearest residential district, a previous automobile dealership operated from this location without any known impact upon the adjacent residential property. The property contains existing landscaping and screening to the rear, which the applicant will maintain.
If you agree with this, please raise your hand. We are in agreement on the findings of fact for a special use. In planning and zoning item 13029, item A, I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, a special use permit request to operate an automobile, an automobile dealership in the B2 General Business District. So moved?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Pill, seconded by Commissioner Fedesco. Question on the motion? A roll call, please.
Okay. Okay, Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Fedesco votes yes. Chairman Richard?
Yes. Okay, item B, I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, special use permit request to allow the sale of used automobiles in the B2 General Business District. So moved?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Thomas, seconded by Commissioner Pill. Question on the motion? A roll call, please.
Commissioner Fedesco votes yes. Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Chairman Richard?
Yes. Okay, we now have two requests for zoning code variance. May we have a reading of the findings of fact?
Criteria number one, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in the district in which it's located. The prior dealership displayed vehicles in the front yard setback. The property was redeveloped recently and operated as an auto dealership with a variance for this separation requirement. There was no known adverse impact on the residential properties to the south from the prior dealership's operations. The property is best suited to use as an automobile dealership, and the owner could not yield a reasonable return without these variances. Criteria number two, the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. An automobile dealership previously operated from this location pursuant to a variance for the lack of separation from a residential district, and there were no known adverse impacts. In pursuant to a variance for a front yard setback encroachment, there were also no known adverse impacts. Criteria number three, the variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. The property is located upon a busy commercial corridor populated by other automobile dealerships. An auto dealership was formerly located on this property. As such, the proposed dealership at this location will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood.
If you agree with these readings, please raise your hand. We are unanimous in agreement. Therefore, the findings of fact are hereby approved for a zoning code variance. I would entertain a recommendation to, or I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, item- to the Board of Trustees, item C, a zoning code variance request to permit the sale of used automobiles within 500 feet of a residence district. So moved?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Fidesco, seconded by Commissioner Pill. Question on the motion? A roll call, please.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Fidesco votes yes. Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Chairman Richard?
Yes. I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, item D, zoning code variance request to permit parking and the required front yard setback. So moved?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Pill, seconded by Commissioner Thomas. Question on the motion? May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Fidesco votes yes. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Chairman Richard?
Yes. All right, sir, you have our recommendation for approval.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Staffs? Any?
No further comments?
No further comments?